Okay, Toni, we're ready.
It's me.
Oh, Susan, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I would like to call the meeting of the Camarillo Library Board to order. Roll call? Oh, yes, roll call.
Trustee Tremblay. Trustee Kildy.
Here.
Trustee Craven.
Here.
President Protim Mulche.
Present.
President Santangelo.
Here. Mrs. Craven, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. Please rise, place your hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments to the agenda.
No speaker cards? Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
I'll second.
Please vote. Passes five to zero. Any departmental items? Don't see any.
There's one.
Item A, one book.
Thank you.
That's the minutes.
You're right.
Here he is.
Oh, good. So I was just waiting for him.
We were just waiting for him to come.
We have our library director is present to give the report.
I planned that whole thing, yeah.
Hello, everyone. Can I step right up? Wonderful, thank you. Yes, I have with me our T-shirt announcing our One City, One Book program. So we're featuring a local author, as it were, Joseph Fink, born and raised in Camarillo, to come and speak about his book and his adventure in writing for our One City, One Book event. This will be April 13th, and we're very proud to have him. Currently, he resides on the East Coast and has this book, Welcome to Night Vale, that is a bestseller and also number-one rated podcast on iTunes. So it's attracting, I think, a little bit of a different crowd than we normally get. It's an unusual title, sci-fi, fantasy, humor, a lot of different angles than we would normally have, but we are hoping that this will diversify our offering a little bit. And Joseph Fink, in this case, has really gone out of his way to be able to come, hold a book signing, and all that good stuff. We are going to limit registration, so you can get a ticket through Eventbrite. It's on our event calendar now. Hop on, please, and register. And then, if I could go on, thank you. So in addition to that, just to recap, last month, we had our Chinese New Year event. We attracted over 1,000 people. It was really wonderful event, and the weather participated. We were very lucky and thankful that that happened. And also with last month, we got a lot of our fiscal year planning done for the next go-around, applied for some different grant programs, and happy to announce that our Russell Fisher Business Collection was awarded a grant to support a startup ecosystem, which is really going to operate like the business expo that we hold that's very popular with our Chamber of Commerce. In this case, it's focused towards entrepreneurs, those businesses that are just starting out, and it will be a bridge to the Ventura County Startup Weekend event that we also are lucky enough to be a part of. And then quickly, I wanted to also promote that we are holding a volunteer appreciation event, and definitely everybody on the library board and city council is invited. This is April 12th, so the day before our One Book, One City event at 5:30. We would like to recognize our volunteers. We have over 200, as you know, and we do all kinds of great work, and they are recognized in the City Volunteer Appreciation Event. What we've noticed, though, are that some that volunteer for the school year, some that are involved in Channel Islands, or our teen volunteers in particular, tend to not be able to attend this other event or otherwise have conflicts. You know, they're teens, they have stuff going on. So this is really meant for that volunteer set that we don't normally get a chance to recognize, so we're throwing a nice celebration for them. There'll be some refreshments, and we'll give the recognition for folks that give time for our adult literacy program, for our teen volunteers come in and basically run our summer reading program. And then in addition to that, we have ongoing folks, not only with our Friends Group, which is, of course, instrumental to what we do, but also volunteers that come for the love of the library. They come, they shelve books, they help with programming on a regular basis. We would not be able to do our business without them. Yeah, so just wanted to get that out there. And that's all that I had at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question.
Mrs. Craven.
Back in the day, like through probably the end of last year, we used to get the library, given to us as council members, the library program of what was coming up for the next couple of months. Do you still have that?
Yes, we do.
We haven't received it lately.
Okay.
Could we start to get that again, whenever it's published?
Yeah, absolutely. So we do that on a bimonthly basis. Since I had started, I'd been putting them on this back table.
But we never get back.
But you never get back there, so, yeah, I will make sure to get those over to you in advance. And we also have an electronic proof that's kind of handy, so we can email it out. It comes like in a newsletter form that has all the same information. But yes, definitely, we still do that. It seems to be very popular. That's the mailer, basically.
Right.
Goes out with the acorn as well. So, yeah, I'd be happy to. And on the cover is our One City, One Book, for instance, this cycle.
Yeah, thank you.
Great point, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Tremblay?
Just a... There we go. Is it on?
Yes.
How's that? I just wanted to put in a plug for One City, One Book. Those of us who are former Tierra Linda and Los Colinas parents will recognize the name Joseph Fink, and his dad, Ron Fink, was responsible, he was beloved, and he was responsible for writing the music for almost all of our children's plays. And it wasn't just a Tierra Linda and Los Colinas, but anyway, I just, it was delightful to read this and delightful to know that he's coming back to town. So, anyway, this is a plug for One City, One Book.
Oh, I love it. Yeah, that's so good to know. We had heard that, in fact, his mom still comes in and picks up holds at the library. So to be able to connect like that, that is really nice and special.
Mr. Mayor?
I have a quick question, if you would. I just want to piggyback on Mr. Tremblay's comments, too. I'm not, I wasn't a parent at Tierra Linda or Los Colinas. I was, in fact, a student at Tierra Linda and Los Colinas myself. I went to school, I grew up with Joseph Fink. He's a very bright young man, and I knew his, I acted in many of Ron Fink's plays growing up, and they were exciting even for a middle-schooler.
They were. His book is equally as exciting. It's very, have you had?
I'm trying to get into the podcast right now.
Yeah, it's interesting. It's different. The pirate ship is mentioned, for instance, in the library, in the story, you know, it's a really cool connection. But just so odd, different, and like you said, intellectual in some ways, but also very funny. Yeah, that's so good to know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. So my wife was very interested in a book, and so we went down, I'm just kind of curious how you forecast how many copies of a book to order. So we went down and tried to check it out, and of course, it was all checked out, and there was a waiting list of 50 people for this specific book, and they had bought, I think it was eight or nine copies. Do you kind of anticipate the demand for a book, or how does that?
Yes.
I won't mention the name of the book, but anyhow, it's a...
Sure. No, it's, there aren't, you aren't the only one.
Yeah.
And what we've noticed is there's sort of a threshold. We have currently a five-to-one ratio. What that means is we're going to anticipate a hold list of, let's say, 50, and then we ought to order 10 copies.
Mm-hmm.
So that five-to-one ratio is hoping to carry over. Some titles end up becoming a little bit more popular, of course. I think something that might address this further on is, for some of those high-demand titles, you know, they're currently checked out for the full duration, and we could probably set that back for new books or bestsellers and maybe only give a week checkout, kind of an express system for new books. And I think that would run people through the list a lot faster. Also, we can respond to that hold list, and that's something that I personally get to do with our monthly selection list, but being that this is an ordering process that really we're getting books about two months in advance, or at least the copies to be processed and all that stuff, I don't think we're necessarily as agile as we need to be to respond to this booming hold list. So in that case, you know, we had the eight copies. That is in line with our holds ratio. I think this is up for discussion, you know. We're looking at shrinking that holds ratio down, at least for our bestsellers, or those anticipated. Our collection system does look at BISAC, which is like a bookstore model that is what, like, for instance, Barnes &amp; Noble might use, to be able to anticipate those that are on the bestseller list. So these are the major publications coming out recently. Michelle Obama's biography, for instance, is one of those that I think we all knew was going to check out, and we needed to stock up on that. So we do have a metric in our collection purchasing, but like you said, when 50 people are waiting, maybe the eight books we purchased weren't enough in that case. But, yeah, we are up for changing this, and I think it would also improve our circulation, that we know that books will be checked out if we can get them ordered in time.
That's a good problem to have, right?
It's a good problem to have, yeah, but definitely needs to be looked at.
Sure.
Good problem to have, especially when, what was it, 11, 12 years ago, when we were making the decision whether to go ahead with building or not, we had, I don't know how many people come and tell us, "Don't build a library. Within 10 years, nobody's going to be reading books. It's all going to be online."
Now look at us.
Now look at you. And look what we've done since then.
Yeah, absolutely. Good problem to have, and I think now we get to be a little bit more strategic, and I'll keep working, I think, with Carmen's office here, and we'll figure out a strategy for handling these things a little better. You know, summer's around the corner, and that's our big youth focus. I think we can anticipate some increased usage in certain areas there as well, you know. These are picture books, early reading books that we got to get stocked up, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Sorry I was late.
You were right on time.
He'll be here early next time.
I know it. Oh, my gosh, well, thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn.
I'm going to open the meeting of the Camarillo Sanitary District. Please let the record reflect that all board members are present. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments to the agenda.
Do I have any public comments? Seeing no public comments and no one coming forward, we're going to move on to the consent calendar.
Move second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Moving on down, we have no departmental items, we have no legal items. Any comments from staff? No comments from staff, and do we have any comments from board members? Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn this meeting.
All right, I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for March 13th to order, please, and let the record reflect that all council members are present. That gets us down to the amendments to the agenda. Ms. City Manager, do you have any amendments to this agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to request that Item 14A, under Study Sessions, Fourth of July Celebration, be tabled at this time. We will have additional information to share at a subsequent council meeting. Also, we request that Item 7A, General Plan Amendment Report for 2018, be moved forward on the agenda to before Section 6 Public Works. So after Consent Calendar, we request to hear that, Item 7A.
So, item... Just a moment, please. Okay. Okay. Any other changes?
No, thank you.
That gets us down, there's no presentation. That gets us down to the Consent Calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
Some motion and a second for approving the Consent Calendar. Is any further discussion on this? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, no items with finance. That does get us down to the General Plan Annual Report for 2018. That's going to be moved from Item 7 to Item 6, and it's the General Plan Annual Report for 2018. Do we have a staff report on that?
Yes, we do, Mayor Kildy.
Thank you, Mr. Vaca.
Oxana Buck will be presenting that item momentarily.
Good evening, Mayor Kildy and council members. The state housing law requires that the cities submit this report to the state HCD and to the planning of, to the Office of Planning and Research by April 1st of each year. The purpose of this report is to provide information on housing development and progress towards meeting our RENA allocation, to provide information on the city's progress in implementation of the programs included in the general plan, to provide an update on the general plan element updates, and to be a resource to the public, the Planning Commission, and the city council. The annual report includes information on all general plan elements, which are listed on this slide. The report also includes four attachments. Attachment 1 provides information on the city's population, housing units, and average household size. Attachment 2 provides the housing data tables required by the state HCD. These tables include details on our housing development and progress in implementing the housing element programs. Attachment 3 provides the monthly report prepared by the community development. It includes details on the status of the residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional projects in the city. And finally, Attachment 4 is the Housing Successor Annual Report on the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, as required by Senate Bill 341. The state required that this is included with the annual report and is posted on the city's website. The city did not have any general plan amendments or zone changes in 2018, except that in December, the city approved their request to modify the previous GPA referral 2014-1. The applicant proposes to relocate a designated neighborhood park site and to re-designate 10 acres to low, medium residential density. This GPA, along with the companion RPD application for 158 detached homes, are currently under review and are anticipated to be scheduled for public hearings this summer. The city had five zoning ordinance amendments in 2018. Ordinance Number 1152 updated parking requirements for excessively dwelling units to comply with state law. Ordinance Number 1153 updated our public hearing noticing procedures. Ordinance Number 1158 reinstated parking provisions pertaining to multifamily ownership projects. Those were previously adopted under Ordinance 1110, but were inadvertently replaced when the city council adopted an ordinance on the accessory dwelling unit parking requirements. Ordinance Number 1151 imposed water efficiency requirements for new buildings and for new plumbing fixtures in the existing buildings to minimize the effect of water shortages. And Ordinance Number 1156 incorporates recent changes in state law, revising the standards on park land dedication and updating the formula for in lieu fees calculation. The land use element includes various land use categories, as shown in this chart. 55% of the city's land use is designated for residential uses, 17% for public uses, 14% for conservation, 9% for industrial, and 5% for commercial. In 2018, the city's circulation projects included the annual slurry seal program to maintain and extend the life of, the lifespan of pavement. A new always stop sign was installed at Coast Street and Lantana Street to improve school and pedestrian safety, and ramp and bike trail improvements at various locations in the city were approved as part of the 2018 five-year capital improvement program. The city's house, the city's housing element addresses the city's regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. As shown in the first column, you see that the city's RENA allocation is 2,224 units, all divided into various income categories. The second and third column show the city's unit production in terms of building permits issued and finalled. Since January 2014, the city issued 1,831 building permits and finalled 1,515. HCD reviews RENA progress based on permits issued, but we track both issued and finalled. The Planning Commission reviewed this item and made minor revisions, including to add a description for conservation land use, address a discrepancy on the land use proportions, and add that VCTC also has routes to California State University Channel Islands, to Simi Valley, and Moore Park. The Planning Commission concurred with staff's suggested action for city council to receive and file the annual report and direct staff to submit the report to HCD and OPR by April 1st deadline. And this concludes my presentation.
Okay, you've heard the staff report. Any questions on this? Mrs. Craven?
I have a couple of questions. On the very first page, well, it says Page 8 of what we received with changes. It was the second page of what was in the packet, but it talks about the housing element on a chart, and it says it was adopted January 8th, 2014. The year it was adopted was 2014, and then the last comprehensive out date was January 8th, 2014. The housing elements we had before, that wasn't considered an update, because everything else, when it was updated, they kept the original date. So I was, I was just curious about that.
So usually, you go by a housing element cycle, and once you enter a new cycle, the previous element pretty much doesn't exist.
So it wasn't updated, it was?
It's basically replaced.
But the other elements of the general plan are just considered to be updated?
As far as I know, they were updated or enhanced or tweaked. They weren't 100% whole-scale replacements.
Okay, okay. And then my other question relates back, and it says the Planning Commission asked that something be done to the conservation part, and it appears to me they got it all wrong. If you look on Page 14 of this new one, I don't know the page of what was in the packet, but it says conservation land uses, and under that description, it talks about energy conservation and compliance with Title 24 of Building Code requirements. But if you come over to Chart 2, Chart 1, it talks about, well, yeah, Figure 1, talks about land uses, and it says that 14% of our land is in a conservation land use, which doesn't have anything to do with energy conservation or building codes. And then if you go to the next page, it's under, on a chart, like, land area by land use category, conservation, agriculture, 1,151 acres, natural open space, 511 acres, urban reserve, zero. But none of that has to do with the description under conservation land uses. So it seems to me that that description, while it's important for someplace else, doesn't have anything to do with the land use category.
We'll look into that further.
Okay, thank you. And that was all I had.
Do you want me to get my question in first, Toni?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have one. It's kind of a housekeeping, and it might just be me, but let me get to that page before we get to Mr. Tremblay's. If we go to big Page 19, and everybody there in 19, and it's the Approved Residential Development page, they're pretty much there.
Of the reports, yes.
Yes, the one that's in your staff report.
Yeah, we're on a different, I'm on a different one, because I'm looking at the new thing that came out.
Approved Residential Development.
Yeah, but they changed a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, they got...
I'm with you.
Let's think for the people that are reading this, that would it be something that we could consider to, let's just say, you know, Shay Homes, the development of Shay Homes to 5979, maybe to put in parentheses that that's in Mission Oaks? For instance, maybe like the Habitat for Humanity, that that's in, on Arneel Road? Or maybe we could put like, that's up in Mission Oaks, or would that be something that anybody would? Just to give them a little bit of an idea exactly where those projects are.
But Shay Homes isn't in Mission Oaks. It's in Pitts Ranch area or the seminary area.
Well, it's kind of Mission Oaks here. I'm just kind of doing...
Well, we could put general location to the project, yes.
Yeah, just a general location type thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Mr. Tremblay, do you have any?
Yeah, I do. I want to talk, go a little bit down in the weeds, and by the way, I appreciate, I know I had sent some questions that were responded to by staff. I know Mr. Mulche did. He raised some good questions, and so thanks for the responses back. Moving past that, though, I really want to focus on beginning of Page 15 of the, of the report, and I want to ask some questions about the RENA process first.
Mine's on 15 here.
The packet?
Yeah, 15.
Not this one? Okay.
Okay, I can, hang on a second. It would be on Page... I got to find it.
22?
Yeah, be on Page 22 of the red folder item.
Okay.
Just to give a little better overview, what's the significance of this report? Why do we have it?
Essentially, it's required by the state, and they want to monitor our progress towards compliance ultimately with our RENA number, which is our Regional Housing Needs Assessment number, which is a number that we're given through SCAG, our local metropolitan planning organization.
Right.
Where we're supposed to provide our fair share of housing units for the region.
Right, and there's been a lot in the press lately, in the media lately, about the governor's, about the governor's wishes on this and legislation that's pending in the legislature. So it's a timely, it's a very timely document to look at. Joe or Oxana, can you just sort of give us the, just give us a 30-second nutshell on the fact that we're in mid-cycle of this process right now, but we're in the midst of planning and preparation for the new RHNA cycle?
Yes, so...
Why that's important?
We're in the midst of what's known as the fifth cycle housing element, which is a period of time from 2013 through 2021. And as 2020 closes in on us, we'll start to begin work on the sixth cycle housing element, which will be from 2021 till 2029. We'll have a new Regional Housing Needs Assessment number, which is to be determined, and we'll have to plan for anticipated zoning at a minimum for the provision of those housing units in our community. And so in the mid-cycle, the cycle that we're currently in, as I indicated, the fifth cycle, we have land use entitlements in place under our existing zoning and zoning capacity to accommodate our Regional Housing Needs Assessment number, and we don't have to have the units physically built currently according to the existing state law. We just need to have the zoning capacity to accommodate those units.
Right, so if you look at Table 3, which is the, it's really, the city has to demonstrate that we have sufficient sites, zone for, and I'm quoting from the report, "zone for and appropriate for residential units to meet the RHNA, the RENA allocation," right?
Correct.
Okay. And, but that said, flipping over to, now I'm on, sorry, everybody, I'm looking at And, but that said, flipping over to, now I'm on, sorry, everybody, I'm looking at two different versions of this. Flipping over to page 23. So midway, in terms of the building permits, we have a, we have a, we meet some of the requirements in there relative to income categories, but we don't meet others, correct?
Yes, we have a deficit in providing the very low and low-income units and the above moderate units.
Okay, so a deficit in the very low and the low-income units?
Yes.
And we are over in the moderate income and above moderate income category?
We're over in the, in the moderate, but we're under in the above moderate. We have a deficit there also.
Eighty-eight percent.
All right. What response, if any, do we expect to receive from, no, let me ask that next. Aside from the state legislation, the, all the pending legislation, to your knowledge, does HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department for the state that really looks at this and drills down on all the cities, are you aware of any new regulatory standards by which they look at this yet?
No.
Okay. So do we expect to receive any communications from HCD regarding the progress report, or do they basically take a mid-cycle RENA report, I don't want to say put it on the shelf, but review it and then set it aside?
Years past, that's been our experience where they receive and review and file our report.
So is it at the, so in terms of compliance with the RENA obligations, it's more of a focus when you're starting, when you're getting to the end point of the cycle as opposed to the cycle?
Well, currently, the requirement is that we have land inventory and zoning capacity to accommodate our RENA numbers, and we're compliant with law in that regard.
Okay. It was on the building permit side.
So under the existing state law, we're not required to have all the units physically constructed.
Okay, right. That's it for my questions. Thanks.
Any other questions from anybody?
Susan does.
It was a very well-written document. I know there was a couple of minor changes, but I want to commend the staff for this. As we know, we're all kind of statistic geeks up here, if you will. So you've got a lot of really good statistics that we can really dig down into, and it's very revealing here. And I think, Joe, we do, I feel our last housing element is certified by the state. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Which is somewhat unusual?
No, it's required by state law.
It is, but I think there are some cities that have not still...
Some cities have not achieved certified housing elements, and that's unique. And those cities are being scrutinized right now by the state government.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I have to commend the staff on, on this.
Susan has some questions.
Is there anybody have any questions, or my, I'm sorry, Susan, absolutely.
It's okay. Mr. Vaca, could you, I was just at the Planning Commission Academy, and we talk a lot about SB 35. And can you expand on it a little bit with your understanding about what it means with the streamlining of the permits?
Yes, so under certain provisions of a new law, Senate Bill 35 Incorporated, it's known as a permit streamlining mechanism whereby if a project includes a certain ratio of affordable housing, it would be approved over the counter. We don't anticipate seeing that in our community based on land values and the fact that affordable housing builders typically use tax credits. And so there's a possibility, but it seems fairly slim.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else from anybody? Mr. Moshe?
No, I just want to say, I submitted most of my questions via email earlier. That was included in the red folder and in the amended packet, so I appreciate that. I do have one question, and I just want to speak it aloud, because there were a few questions I got from the community in regards to this one particular item. And that was the Camino, sorry, big page, I'm looking at the red folder, big page 27, where it has a list of all the statuses of the projects. And the one that stuck out was the Camino Ruiz and ZDI project, where we listed as pending entitlement incomplete. The question I had asked is, it hasn't even been, the general plan amendment hasn't even been passed yet. So why do we have, why does that state pending entitlement when we haven't even done a general plan amendment?
Because the general plan amendment is packaged with the change of zone and the plan development permit and the sequin analysis, and it's all pending review, which will ultimately culminate with public hearings before the planning commission and then ultimately the city council.
So that, that all moves in tandem with one another as a package?
In a package, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions from anybody? All right, I think the motion is to receive and file.
So move with maybe them looking at the conservation land use description.
But, I'm sorry, it's not just receiving file, it has to be, it has to actually be submitted to HCD and the OPR.
Yes, absolutely. We will do that.
And the Governor's Office of Planning.
Planning and Research.
Okay.
Okay.
So would somebody like to make that motion then, please?
Happy, I think Ms. Craven already made it, so I'll be happy to second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a section, second. Is there any other further discussion on this? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, that gets us down to the public works item. It's the North Valley Desaulter Project WT-11-01 Agreement Amendment. Mr. Cottrell, would you take that tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kilde and council members. I have a short report on this. Essentially, this item is to consider an amendment to an existing professional services agreement with Water Systems Consulting Incorporated, or WSC, who has been under contract through this agreement with the city for project management support services for our desaulter project. The original agreement approved in August of 2017 was for the project management services with a scope and fee of $400,000 for the project management services during the design of the project. Towards the latter half of last year in September, as the project near completion of design and moving towards going out to bid and eventually construction, a First Amendment to the agreement was approved by city council for WSC to continue to provide the project management support during bidding and then eventually construction and startup with an amount not to exceed $669,750. So that original agreement and the First Amendment is in place for these services for WSC for the remainder of the project, specifically for the project management support. The First Amendment that did get approved included WSC's scope of work and the associated fee, however, it did not include a listing of all the labor classifications and hourly rates, and also markup percentages for direct expenses and subcontracted services. Therefore, the action here tonight is essentially a cleanup add-on item to complete the information within the agreement to add in WSC's personnel classifications and labor rates, which will apply for the duration of this agreement. So that concludes my report and be happy to answer any questions.
Just one question. These, these rates, are they pretty much contiguous with what the rates are with other, you know, within that realm of business that they're in?
Yes, these are similar rates that we see for similar services.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Move to authorize the city manager to execute agreement number 2017-74B with Water Systems Consulting Incorporated.
Second?
It's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, that gets us, okay, that gets us down to item B, which is the Water Conservation Credit Program Agreement Amendment. Mr. Cottrell, is that you?
Yes, yes, thank you. So I have a short presentation on this item, which is to consider an amendment to an existing professional services agreement that the city has with Waterwise Consulting Incorporated, who has been hired to administer and implement the installation of water-saving devices programs under the city's water demand credit program. So by way of a little bit of background on this program, I wanted to cover that. And essentially, back in roughly 2012 or so timeframe, as we can recall, even though with the recent rains, it seems a distant memory.
[laughing]
But during that time period and for subs, another couple of years, several years, the city, along with the rest of Southern California for sure, and the bulk of California, was under severe drought conditions. And the city in particular was experiencing that, along with the situation of numerous land development projects that were in the works and with construction to be moving forward in the near future. During that time period, concerns were raised regarding this new construction bringing additional water demand to our city's water service system. And in 2015, those concerns were, were considered and discussed, and essentially, two programs were developed to address the situation with land development projects ready to move forward and future upcoming projects, culminating in one of the programs was the Water Demand Credit Program. And just very simply put, eligible development projects were, this, this program enables, enabled those eligible development projects to pay an amount into the city fund whereby then the city would implement water savings measures, conservation measures, in, to the extent of offsetting the amount of additional demand that particular project would bring to the water system. And I want to emphasize, it is the city's water service area system that was included in this program. So only projects that would be able to participate in this program are within the city water service area, and those water savings measures that have been implemented and will be implemented are within the city's water service area. The whole intent, again, being water conservation measures to be put in place to offset the additional demand that's being brought with the developments that were underway and moving into construction. A point of clarification on an eligible project was determined to be a land development project that had received its entitlements prior to the date that this program was put into effect, which was November of 2015. So an eligible project was determined to have its entitlements prior to that date. And there were numerous projects that met those requirements of eligibility. And the other requirement was, is those projects needed to move along through the design and ready for construction and be able to pay that water demand credit amount prior to the end of 2017. So the other program that was developed to address those projects that were not determined to be eligible because they hadn't received their entitlements yet, several other projects coming through the process, knowing that they're coming up, and any on into the future. This program is, is in effect indefinitely, whereby any projects that weren't eligible for the credit program essentially need to develop their own arrangements to implement water savings measures for conservation. Again, all within the water, city's water service area. So for instance, a developer could enter into an agreement with the school district or a park district, another entity whereby they would agree to implement water savings measures, whether it's fixtures, you know, plumbing fixtures, irrigation upgrades that would yield water savings, turf replacement, and those kinds of things. And all of that would be under an agreement that the city would be in review of and approval of, not a party to, other than approving that before development could be able to go ahead and get permits. That arrangement and agreement would need to be in place. So we have the two programs in place, the, essentially, the demand credit program and the demand offset program. And what we're focusing on tonight is the ongoing progress of the Water Conservation Credit Program. And the first step in developing that was to come up with an answer to the question of how much would it cost to offset one acre foot per year? That's the unit of measure that we use for demand in, in the water world. And, you know, so what would the cost be to offset one acre foot of demand? And that was determined by looking at various measures, conservation measures that could be taken to develop this, this offset, this reduction of one acre foot per year, which determined to be $8,825. So quite a bit of research and analysis went into developing that number. And just by way of explanation, or as far as what one acre foot of water is, it's a roughly 325,000 gallons. Average backyard swimming pool is 16,000 gallons. That'd be roughly 20 backyard swimming pools, or essentially a football field, one foot deep of water is roughly an acre foot of water. So the Conservation Credit Program is underway. Like I mentioned, it was put into place in, with, with the final updates in November of 2015. And those eligible projects have moved forward. To date, $3 million, just a bit over that, but roughly $3 million has been paid into the city's water demand credit offset, or water demand credit program. It's a separate fund that that money is paid into, and based on the need to offset the total demand brought by those eligible projects, which is estimated to be 346.6 acre feet per year. Essentially, that's the new demand brought by those additional projects that were eligible for the credit program. That's a relatively conservative estimate. At the time that a project is going through the planning and design phases, we obviously don't have actual water use, because nothing's been built yet. But based on the type of development, the type of units being built, we can, that can be estimated. And there is a, by nature, it's a somewhat of conservative estimate. So that was the, the number of total demand from the projects that have, to date, paid into the program. And there are no more eligible projects able to pay in, largely because we've passed that December 31, 2017 date. So this is the sum of money that's been collected so far. In 2016, the city hired this consultant, Waterwise Consulting, to implement programs to defectuate and put into place water savings measures within the city's water conservation, or within, within the city's water service area, utilizing these funds that were contributed by the developments. To date, 1.2 million of that $3 million has been spent under Water, Waterwise's agreement with us. And we've, we've seen a 171 acre foot per year reduction in, in water use, essentially offsetting 171 acre feet of that 346.6 so far of, of water demand. And the initial, and somewhat ongoing, it's tapered off a little bit with the toilet retrofits, that was the initial effort put forward, targeting initially older residential units that would most likely have your higher volume flush toilets. So those were targeted and then expanded for other residential uses. Essentially, any, anybody within the city's water service area is eligible to apply for this program, including commercial. There was an amendment to the agreement with Waterwise to include reaching out to commercial properties, including multi-unit buildings such as apartments and hotels have received toilet retrofits also. So where we have numerous toilets going in at one, one location. So to date, we have a little over 2,000 of the ultra-high efficient toilets at .8 gallons per flush have been installed. At the same time, through this program, Waterwise also offers and installs for, at no additional charge, and offers to the residents water-saving showerheads and faucet aerators. So a little over 1,500 of those have been installed. And as additional monies were being deposited with the cities, as the developments were going forward into construction, the program has been expanded to include a landscape auditing and retrofit element. We call it CLEAR, Camrio's Landscape Efficiency Audit and Retrofit. And so that program was established and with several parts to it, but essentially offering smart irrigation controllers to, either to replace or new controllers, if somebody doesn't have an automatic control system, can be implemented, along with high-efficiency rotating sprinkler nozzles and drip irrigation to replace other high-water-use irrigation. So you see the numbers there, almost 8,000 sprinkler nozzles switched out and almost 13,000 feet of drip irrigation installed. So under the agreement with Waterwise, they've been, we've been paying for them to implement these water savings features. And as I mentioned, so far, that 171 acre feet of water has been offset. And we verified that by checking the before and after water use of a, of a quite large sampling of city water customers over since that period of time that these water-saving devices have been put into place. So there is a remaining $1.8 million of the money that has been deposited that will need to be spent into the future. And it is expected that it will offset... to be spent into the future, and it is expected that it will offset the remaining 175.6 acre feet per year of water, of that additional demand required. So like I said, Waterwise is currently under contract and will continue. And the action tonight actually is to update their list, listing of equipment that could be offered, especially targeting commercial participation, a wider range of controllers and other equipment that can attract additional participation in the landscape retrofitting program. So that's the action before council tonight. And just wanted to leave with a display of the different advertisements that we've used for the programs. The blue ones, the residential toilet retrofit program, and the greener, green ones for commercial water customers. And then also, we have a mailer. We've performed direct mailings, utility bill inserts, and all this information is available on our website as well. And the last one there is for the landscape audit retrofit program. And these programs are ongoing. We will be needing to come back to council sometime this year to add on additional services for Waterwise, their existing agreement. I believe it goes up to 1.4 million. We'll need to expand that as they continue to advertise and promote these programs. We possibly may need to look into additional measures, but Waterwise has significant experience and success in implementing these programs to gain the necessary demand, water demand offset. So I just wanted to highlight there at the bottom of the screen there, to participate, anybody just needs to call 888-987-9473. And again, that's for customers that receive a city of Camrio water bill within the Camrio's water service system. So that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I've got a few.
Mr. Moshe.
Thank you, Mr. Klotzel. Have we circled back to verify the anticipated acre feet of these new developments, which we're collecting monies to help offset?
Right. Good question. And what that would take is verifying the meter reads of the new construction, which some of those have been constructed and are occupied. The bulk of them have not been fully constructed or fully occupied, so we don't have that complete information yet.
Do we intend, once they are constructed, do we intend to go back, read those meters, and see how effective this program ultimately is?
Yes.
Okay. And then, how is Waterwise verifying the water, of what they anticipate we've saved thus far? How are they verifying that, or how are they coming to that conclusion or that number?
Right. So as I mentioned, actually, city staff has done the bulk of going and checking the water reads of the customers that receive these, either the toilet retrofits or the landscaping, and especially the ones that have been in place for a year or more. We've been able to, again, fairly large sampling, representative sampling of water meters that, of locations that have received the retrofits, we're seeing the reduction that's, basically, we're verifying that reduction in water use.
In order to get the most bang for our buck here, could we hypothetically, because we know how much water each resident is using, at least within our water district, and we know how large either the parcel is and/or the home that sits on that parcel, could we hypothetically compare that data to one another and see that by square footage, who has the highest water usage, and possibly target those homes to where, because maybe, I don't know, maybe there's a large number of people living in that home, and they're all using the same toilet and same shower, maybe hypothetically, we could get, you know, by changing out that particular toilet, we may get more than, say, the 3,000 square foot house that's only occupied by two people.
Right. So that's the bulk of where that, those 2,000, or those number of toilets went to initially, that was the first step, is Waterwise, along with city staff, looked at water use, you know, size of homes, size of lots, because you've got irrigation included in that also. Essentially, we targeted and are continuing to target the higher water use, definitely to get more bang for our buck.
And we've approached apartment complexes and larger, more dense developments where there might be more people per toilet, if I want to use that metric?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
That is all I have for now. Thank you.
Dave, let me just crystallize what you're asking us to vote on tonight, okay? What this agreement is, is to expand the list of equipment available for the landscape retrofit. That's what this item is tonight. In the future, and thanks for the background, because that was helpful, but that's what we're trying, what you're recommending that we approve tonight, and then in the future, we'd be coming back to appropriate the remaining, of the balance of 1.4 million to implement additional retrofits and additional conservation measures.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, to state it succinctly, that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? So will of the council?
I'm moved to authorize the city manager to execute Agreement Number 2016-21F with Waterwise Consulting Incorporated to update the list of landscape retrofit services and products.
I'll second.
A motion to second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That passes unanimously.
Could I make a comment really quick? I know we've had a lot of rain, almost 18 inches, since October 1st, and a lot of people think the drought is over. The paper yesterday, The Star, pointed out that Casitas was, I think it's only 45, maybe 48 percent full. Our aquifers have not been replenished, and we still need to keep up all of our conservation practices.
Point well taken.
Could I add on a comment on this? Good reminder that, and we do continue to be in what we call Stage 1 water supply condition here in the city of Camrio. Council did not elect to totally remove all water conservation status, as the state did, but we are with, and that includes a goal of a reduction of 10 percent. We continue to pretty much meet the 20 percent reduction that was originally set a while back under the governor's orders. But yes, we still have a Stage 1 water supply condition, limiting four days a week for watering, when watering is necessary, and then a host of other mandatory conservation measures that are included in that.
Mr. Tremblay.
Well, it also is appropriate to bear note that the city is at least by 50 percent dependent upon state water supplies. So it's both, it's a combination of both groundwater as well as state water, and we are, in our areas, still susceptible to seismic activity in the delta, which could render the delta and those pipelines unavailable to us. So I'm just making another pitch as to why the desalter is such an appropriate project, in addition to the fact that we have environmental degradation in the groundwater in the PV basin, which we need to address. So that was a, that was an encouragement for the desalter project.
All right. Thank you. That gets us down to City Attorney, the Camrio Ranch Bylaws Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, due to the hour that we're at, I suggest we move on to study session and close session at this time.
Okay. Counselor, would you like to announce our close session item, please?
Yes, I can do that. It's a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. It's pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9D1. The name of the case is Southwest Voter Registration Education Project versus the City of Camrio.
Okay, so with that, we will go into a close session and a study session. So with that, we're in recess until 7:30. members are here. And Ms. Santangelo, how about a flag salute? Would you please lead us in that?
Please stand. Hand over heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No amendments to this agenda? Mr. Norman, any amendments to this part of the agenda?
No amendments to the agenda.
Okay, no presentations? Let's see, public safety information? Do we have the 2008 crime report? We have our commander here. Mr. Murray? Yeah, the microphone is on, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager, Dave Norman, and city staff. Good evening. My pleasure once again to present the 2018 UCR crime stats for the city of Camrio. And to do that, please draw your attention to the screen up on the board there. Okay, the first slide here, just to kind of give some background information. The Uniform Crime Report, or UCR as it's referred to, provides a reliable set of crime data for law enforcement, local government, the public, media, and educators for research and planning purposes. The FBI is tasked with collecting and publishing the UCR, which places criminal offenses into two categories, violent and property crime offenses. Violent offenses include homicide, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. Property offenses include burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. And please, if there's any questions that might come up during the course of any one slide, by all means, interject at that time, or we can wait to the end. Either way is perfectly fine. From a historical perspective, in 2018, the UCR Part 1 crime data reflected an overall decrease of 23 percent, in addition to a 4 percent decrease in 2017. Crime trends are certainly cyclical. We've seen that. In 2018, there were 13.41 crimes per thousand residents. Between '91 and 2018, the crime rate has fluctuated between a high of 32.44 crimes per thousand residents in 1991, to a previous low of 14.82 in 2011. In 2018, the crime rate is the lowest Camrio has experienced since the implementation of the uniform crime reporting method. Crime rates are affected by many factors, including social trends, economic conditions, and legislative changes. Again, in looking at the UCR Part 1s in 2018, there were 922 Part 1 crimes that were reported, which was a decrease of 276 crimes from 2017, a 23 percent drop. 13.41 crimes for every thousand Camrio residents. Violent crime ended up being 1.13 crimes per thousand, and as you can see in 2017, it was 1.55, which is a reduction of 26 percent. Property crime came in at 12.28 per thousand. It was 15.97 in 2017, a 23 percent drop from last year. In 2018, Camrio generated well over 18,000 calls for service compared with over 19,000 in 2017. This was an overall decrease of 5 percent. In 2000, I'm sorry, in the last bullet with respect to arrests, 3,096 arrests were made this year as compared to 2623 in 2017, which was an increase of 18 percent. Looking at this table here for the UCR Part 1 offenses for violent crime, as you can see on the left column, it's the four that we have there, homicide, rape, criminal sexual assault, robbery, and assault aggravated. As you go from left to right in each of the columns, starting with homicide, from 2016, '17, and '18, we had zero homicides in '18, obviously, compared to '17, a numerical difference of negative 1. With respect to rape and criminal sexual assault, we went from 21 to 7 in '16 in 2018. As you can see, that's a significant increase of 129 percent, or nine crimes. There's a slide that I'll go into more detail and context about that particular slide as we move forward. With respect to robbery, 31, 42, and then 21 in 2018, saw a 50 percent decrease from last year, or 21 less crimes. With respect to aggravated assault, in '16, we had 67 in '17, 56 in '18, 41, a 27 percent drop, or 15 less crimes. And at the bottom in blue there for the total violent crime rollups, we went from 123 to 106 and 78 in 2018, for an overall decrease of 26 percent, or 28 less crimes.
Let me just ask, the percentage reduction is with respect from '18 back to '17, not counting '16?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. That's just a year over. So in talking about the rape and criminal sexual assault, as of 2014, the UCR changed the definition of rape, broadening the definition from the carnal knowledge of a female forcibly and against her will to also include crimes such as sodomy penetration with a foreign object, forced oral copulation, and now both genders are now included in the reporting of rape. Typically, with the broadening of this category, most all agencies have seen a drastic increase in the reporting, given the definition change. So taking a look further of what happened here in 2018, as I said, there were 16 reported rapes in 2018. If you look at the table to the right, as it goes from 2014 down to 2018, you can see 14, 16, 21, 7, and then this year, 16, which is the 129 percent increase. Based upon the reported cases, there is no established pattern or trend. Eight suspects have been arrested based on these cases. In all but two of the cases, the alleged offenders were known to the victim. However, the allegations appear to lack veracity.
Dave, what does that mean, lack veracity?
So basically, based on the allegations, we're having a difficult time proving that they occurred, basically. Moving on to the property crime for the UCR Part 1s, and again, going from left to right, 2016 through '18, the percent change and the numerical difference. Residential burglary, 102, '91, and 65 in '18. So there was a 29 percent dip from last year, which is 26 less crimes. Burglary, anything other than a residence, 116, '91, and 45 respectively, was a 51 percent decrease, or 46 less crimes. Theft, grand theft, anything over $950, 348 crimes, 341 and 261 in '18, were down 23 percent and 80 less crimes. Petty theft, 476 crimes reported in '16, 485 in '17, 402 in '18, which resulted in a 17 percent decrease, or 83 less crimes. From the auto theft line, 99, 78, and 68 respectively, down 13 percent, or 10 crimes. And then arson at the bottom, we had 7 in '16, 6 in '17, 3 in '18, which was a dip of 50 percent, or three less crimes. And then in the total rollup at the bottom, in 2017, we had 1092. This last year, 844, which is 23 percent down, or 248 less crimes. Transitioning to our detective bureau and some of the workload indicators that they had done this last year, they reviewed over 1,500 cases, 248 less than in 2017, which is a 14 percent decrease. 987 were felony cases, and 521 were misdemeanor. 799 of those cases were closed, of which 423 cases were closed by arrest. 124 search warrants were authored and served. A couple of cases of interest with respect to our detective bureau. Through the use of investigative technology, an Oxnard resident was arrested after committing armed gas station robberies in Ventura, Thousand Oaks, and one in Camrio. One suspect was arrested for attempted burglary of a liquor store and subsequently linked to a prior burglary of the same location. Our detective unit worked with the sheriff's major crimes on a series of robberies in Camrio, which included Little Caesar's Pizza, Union 76 Gas, and Shell Gas. Four arrests were made in connection with those robberies, and there are no outstanding suspects. They were responsible for 11 separate They were responsible for 11 separate robberies throughout Santa Paula, Oxnard, Ventura, and Camarillo. Our unit aggressively investigated organized crime trends, which includes the commercial burglary crews, the shoplifter crews, and residential burg crews, by employing advanced investigative tools. Moving on to our special enforcement detail, and this is certainly worthy of mention, the Camarillo Special Enforcement Detail is a multifaceted team comprised of a sergeant, two seniors, two deputies, and a civilian administrative assistant. This is a plainclothes detail, and assigned deputies investigate a wide range of criminal activity within the city of Camarillo, including violent crimes, criminal street gang activity, street-level narcotic offenses, property crimes, and graffiti crimes. In 2018, SED conducted 178 probation parole searches, resulting in 38 arrests. They authored 23 search warrants and made a total of 168 arrests. They seized 85 firearms and thousands of rounds of ammunition. They arrested eight individuals for prostitution and pimping-related charges. Routinely assists other sheriff investigative units and outside agencies. This is a particularly very important unit for the PD, to be able to deal with some of the higher-level crimes, particularly when we're dealing with crews and surveillances and special operations. Just to take a look at this table here for SED, although they arrested 168 total, this kind of breaks out some of the more prolific arrests. 74 were drug-related, 18 warrants, 10 property crimes, 21 involved weapons, two stolen vehicles, three child endangerment, eight robbery/carjacking, two parole violations, and four gang incidents along with eight pimping prostitution. A case of interest for the special enforcement detail, this was particularly interesting, carrying a loaded firearm in public investigation. So, SED and patrol deputies, they responded to a suspicious person called a local business. When SED located this suspicious person, discovered he was unlawfully carrying a concealed handgun. SED confirmed the suspect was not a law enforcement officer, and that he was on probation. A subsequent probation search was conducted at the suspect's house, and during the search, detectives located 11 firearms and thousands of rounds of ammunition. SED detectives confirmed the subject was prohibited from possessing firearms per his probation terms. The Ventura DA's office filed numerous felony weapons violation charges against this suspect. Moving and transitioning to the Community Resource Unit. And this particular unit obviously has a big impact with respect to our community outreach and what they're able to do, not only from a crime prevention standpoint, but really the community enrichment and trying to get programs out. Multifaceted for sure. Obviously, it's inclusive of our school resource officers, all Pleasant Valley Unified and Oxnard Unified District Schools. They investigate school-related crimes, youth counseling, mentoring, training of school staff. Study with the COT program is still going very strong at Rancho Campana, where our deputy spends a couple hours every day doing that. Engagement with the youth, guest speakers, and a lot of positive feedback from parents about that interaction that takes place at the school. That's one of our Coffee with the Cops in the upper right there. We ended up doing nine or 10 of those this last year. They're very popular, and they're extremely important for people to come up and approach us so we can discuss whatever the issues of the day are. Still on the Community Resource Unit, coordination of volunteer groups. We all know and understand the value of volunteers, and it's certainly no exception for the PD. Currently, with our Camarillo Police Explorer Post, 25 members going strong, donating close to 6,000 hours. Disaster Assistance Response Team, 18 members, again, donating over 1,200 hours of their time. And then the Citizens Patrol, invaluable resource for us, 28 members donated well over 10,000 hours last year. With respect to our youth, the diversion program, this is a program by the youth officer where if it's a first-time offense and it's a misdemeanor, we sort of act like the probation officer. Instead of making it a probation case, we sort of write up a contract, give them an informal six-month probation, and handle it all informally. That's been successful. Parent-child counseling, and RM Piles Boys Camp. Basically, what that is, is we refer kids through the district. For this camp, it's not necessarily designed for anyone that's delinquent, it's for any young kid that wants to, you know, get some leadership skills and learn some things about the outdoors, and they have these camps up in the Sequoia. Of course, our famous McGruff Crime Fighting Dog. We have our Student Academy, we have our Kid Print. Within the community, again, Neighborhood Watch, I think we're up to 36 groups now. As I mentioned, the Coffee with a Cop, our Business Watch, Citizens Academy going very strong, the Adult Information Cards that we continue to do at the station, Senior Safety Driving Classes, Parenting Classes, and of course, Project Hope that I'll talk a lot more about. So, that does bring us to Project Hope. So, back in 2013, Project Hope, helping our community progress efficiently. Is staffed by a homeless intervention deputy, and you may have met him, Deputy Chris Dyer, who does a fantastic job in this particular assignment, is designed to serve and support our homeless population by connecting them with vital resources in an effort to transition them out of homelessness. These services include One Stop, a community multi-service event hosted by the Ventura County Healthcare Agency, which occurs the second and fourth Thursday every week at the Church of Nazarene in Camarillo, where assistance can be provided for medications, behavioral health issues, food stamp applications, medical needs, veterans support, legal assistance, and a lot more. Just some noteworthy points with respect to Project Hope. Seven people living on the street received permanent housing as a result of contact initiated by our homeless intervention deputy. In 2018, the homeless intervention deputy made approximately 168 contacts for about an average of 14 per month. And this last piece is really important for us. On 1/28/19, through Ventura County Behavioral Health Grant Funding, Camarillo has been allocated a clinician to assist our homeless intervention deputy 20 hours a week. And one primary goal is to work closely with our homeless intervention deputy to specifically reach out to serve those resistant to services. The idea behind the clinician is to develop a non-law enforcement connection who may have more success in gaining needed trust, so services will ultimately be accepted. So, we're really excited about this program to see really what fruits it bears.
Commander Murray?
Yes.
On the 168 contacts, are those unique contacts or those total contacts? Is he making contact with similar people?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, is that, that's total contacts then?
Yes.
Okay.
And this particular slide, you know, is really emblematic of a true success story. And I think if you can save one soul, I think any program is worth having. You know, and before I kind of go on, this is Sherry Norlander, and I'll just give this disclaimer that we reached out to her, and she gave us permission to tell her story. But, you know, the amazing transformation and success story of Sherry Norlander is truly that. You know, she was documented as being homeless in Camarillo, at least since back to 2012. Was able to survive on the street with the help of, you know, generous community members. Had been contacted hundreds of times by deputies to check on her well-being, and of course, was service-resistant. Only at which time where she had a medical emergency and she was forced to get some help, did her transition really kind of begin. And begin it did. So, I mean, this is how she looked on the street for many of those years, surviving whether it's the heat or the cold. And this is her now. So, she was relocated to Visalia, California, reunited with her four children, continuing to undergo treatment where she is getting better every day. Those are her four kids. So, I mean, really a true success story, and really amazing transformation for someone's life. So, when you see someone on the street and you believe there is nothing you can do for them, and there's nothing but despair, the reality is, everybody has a chance and some hope, and this is an example of that. This was another story, another success story, and this was really driven by Deputy Dyer. He had made contact with a family. This family was living in that motor home under the freeway, three kids, mom and dad living in the RV. They were receptive to the services. The RV was not running at the time, they were kind of stuck there, had nowhere to get anywhere, and they were, they needed help. And then through the combined efforts of the cities' involved stakeholders, whether it was the mechanic that helped fix their motor home for free, or the church that provided some resources to get them plane tickets, it was just a great team effort. The family, again, was provided these resources to allow them to join their family members out of state, get off the street, and get a new start for a better life. So, another really good ending to a tough spot for some folks. So, looking at our, transitioning to our Traffic Bureau, again, this table represents, across the top there, the years 2016, 17, 18, the percent change and the numeric difference. And as we kind of go down the line, citations and down through there. In 2016, as you can see through 17, we had a difference of 4942 to 5927, which is a 20% increase, or 985 more tickets written. On the parking citation side, from last year to this year, we were up 32% with a plus 59 numerically. On the injury collisions, 245, 272, 238, we're down 13%, a numeric number 34 less. Fatal collisions, we had 2 in 16, 2 in 17, we had 3 this last year. That's a 50% increase and plus 1 over last year. DUI arrests, 153 in 16, 164 in 17, and 231 this last year. That is a 41% increase, or 67 more arrests. Significant. With respect to DUI collisions, 57 in 16, 63 in 17, 63 in 18, the same number, so that's flat from last year. Stored vehicles, vehicles that we tow, 364, 18, and 44 respectively, that's up 16% or 66 numerically total. Circling back to our new resources, 8 Ocean 41 and 8 William 1, that's a report writer. In July of 17, the City Council approved the addition of these two important resources for the Camarillo Police Department. 2018 was the first full year these resources were in deployment, and their workloads indicate they were necessary and effective additions. When you look at the table there, and you look at the workload that they shared, calls for service for the patrol car, 867, self-initiated contacts, 460, arrests 77, completed reports 213, traffic citations over 150, field interview cards, close to 200. With respect to the report writer, 411 calls for service, 282 completed reports, and 16 FI cards.
So, just to go back to the discussion at the budget time last year, hiring these people allowed the deputies to be out in the field a lot more.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Some notable crimes in 2018, residential burglaries, there were 65 reported in the city of Camarillo in 18. That's 26 fewer residential burglaries than in 17, where we had 91, a decrease of 29%. This is also the fewest number of yearly reported residential burglaries on record for the city since 2001. Commercial burglaries, we had 46 that were reported in the city. This is 45 fewer reported commercial burglaries than from 2017, where again, we had 91, a decrease of 49%. This is also the fewest number of yearly reported commercial burglaries on record for the city since 2010. Even though the number of burglaries has decreased, crew-type residential burglaries have continued across the Southland. Working with our regional partners, investigators have linked burglaries across jurisdictions and have been working with task forces outside Ventura County to identify and apprehend suspects. In a continuing effort to battle these burglary crews, investigators have increased their use of technology to quickly solve crimes. Some techniques used that enhance our effectiveness include facial recognition software programs, LPR cameras, combined with coordinated extra patrol efforts, both high-visibility and undercover operations.
Commander, what are LPR?
So, that's the license plate reader cameras?
Yep.
Yes. So, moving forward, you know, you never stay static in this business, and we're always looking for reduction strategies to improve our bottom line. We still continue with our monthly crime control meetings, discussion by management of all sheriff's jurisdictions regarding crime trends. We do this once a month with all the chiefs of police for all our contracts, along with our crime analysis folks, and we dig down and find out what's happening across the county. Specific or emerging crime trends are identified in an effort to more effectively allocate resources. Innovative ideas and solutions are shared and effective methods are broadly implemented. We continue to concentrate on our prolific offenders in the Camarillo area utilizing intelligence-led policing strategies, including regular, pre-planned, targeted probation and parole searches. And when you look at the intelligence-led policing, basically what that boils down to is you identify your prolific offenders within the community. Those that are on probation, on parole, committing the crimes, and we put a lot of attention on those folks by invoking their terms, conducting searches, and monitoring their activity. And when they get arrested, we streamline those cases with the district attorney's office, so they don't all get filed individually and get pled out for nothing, whereas we try to bundle them up and submit that as a package sort of proposition. So, again, people are spending less time in custody, so we're doing our best for those that require to be incarcerated that they stay there. We continue to work with the Ventura County DA's office in regards to the implementation of intelligence-driven prosecution to effectively prosecute those offenders. So, moving forward with more crime reduction enforcement and strategies continued. So, with respect to our Camarillo outlets, utilizing volunteer resources obviously has helped us a great deal. High-visibility undercover proactive police patrols, electronic surveillance, and automated license plate readers. Domestic violence, this is an area where we're trying to coordinate DV training and awareness, immediate follow-up with domestic violence victims by detectives, regularly consult with domestic violence DA to encourage case filings, monitor repeat offenders, and follow-up with victims and suspects as often as needed. And what that in essence means is now we're getting reports through crime analysis of all the domestic violence cases, for example, that would occur in Camarillo. And we're going to track those that are repeat offenders. Will we circle back with the victims? Are they getting the right help? Are they getting connected with resources? What's their current situation? Do they need outreach? So, they don't become lost in, you know, that one address where we respond three times, four times a month, every other month, whatever the case may be, and we can intervene earlier. Residential burglaries, utilizing the Community Resource Unit for public awareness and town hall meetings. We had a very successful one not too long ago here. Conduct extra patrols, work with crime analysis to identify crime trends, targeted areas, utilize cameras, and continue working with Neighborhood Watch groups to improve neighborhood safety. Hotels, motels, work with local establishments and provide training on how to identify criminal activity. Conduct regular patrols using beat cars and SED to obtain information related to suspicious activities and immediately follow-up when possible with probation and parole searches. Illicit massage parlors, prostitution, and human trafficking. Regularly monitor websites that promote local prostitution activities. Conduct random inspections on any identified illicit massage parlor. Work with city code enforcement. Utilize municipal code violations during business inspections, and identify human traffic victims and provide the appropriate resources. We know that if we look into these areas where that criminal element tends to exist, it's going to be productive for quality-of-life issues, make no mistake about that. With respect to schools, mitigating potential school violence by increasing the use of a recently drafted threat assessment tool. Immediate follow-up on any issues involving a threat, and that's any kind of threat of any kind, and continue using a standardized campus safety plan for all schools within the district. In conclusion, the city of Camarillo has contracted for police services with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office since its incorporation in 1964. For over 50 years, the Camarillo Police Department has strived to provide the highest degree of ethical and professional service to the members of the public where our core mission is to safeguard lives and protect property. This is accompanied by maintaining the public's trust through continued community outreach, fair and impartial treatment of those we encounter, and creating a zero tolerance for individuals intent on committing crime within the community. It is further our goal to ensure that quality-of-life issues continue to be a priority so that Camarillo remains one of the most desirable places to live, work, and raise a family. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Santangelo?
I should have stopped you, because I need you to go back to like slide two. Sorry.
That's okay.
That one, actually. So, maybe it wasn't. One more. That one. So, arrests went up, but crimes went down. How does that work?
Simple question, but a good question. Oftentimes, when you arrest the right people, there is definitely a correlation as the arrests go up and the reported crime can go down. We have a graph to prove that. I don't have it part of this slideshow, but there's definitely a correlation. I can't point to one specific reason, but make no mistake, if your arrests are way up and ours are up 18%, that's going to... and ours are up 18%, that's going to impact your overall crime. Yeah.
So, it might speak to the fact that some people are committing multiple crimes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Right.
Mr. Tremblay, do you? Oh, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a few questions. So, I really appreciate everything the Ventura County Sheriff does. I did have the opportunity to ride along with one of your deputies a few months back, and it's amazing the pressure and the number of hats that they have to wear in any one situation. And there were several situations. We had all, everyone different than the other, and so it's really remarkable. I want to make sure I understand some of the numbers, too, and what goes into them. We didn't, and people say this from time to time, when numbers go up and down, there was no, there was no change in, other than the rape that you went over, that kind of the change in the definition or what was reported in that category of rape. Was there, we didn't, there was no change in definition and/or how we categorize crimes?
For 2018?
That would impact these numbers?
No.
Okay.
With respect to the rape and sexual assault, that occurred in 14, and so that broadened definition changed from that time moving forward. But with respect to all the numbers that you see here representative of 2018, nothing has changed.
Okay. The definition of crimes has not changed, how they're reported has not changed. So, we're comparing apples to apples, year to year?
No, other than that specific category that we just talked about.
Okay. Well, that takes care of that question. You see things like Ring Doorbell. I have one myself. Has that been very helpful to your detectives and either, do you guys attribute that to preventing crimes and/or solving crimes?
Yes, on both. And Ring, whether it's Ring or any other product that you have, it's extremely beneficial not only to potentially dissuade or prevent a potential crime, but certainly on the post-action plan from an investigative standpoint. Because clearly what we can do with permission from the homeowner, you know, they can give us their IP address and they can give us that data to help investigate, and they're doing that and they can sign up to do that. So, that's really important. And just to your point, I think the community is getting smarter and smarter every day. I mean, we know that a lot of crimes are preventable, especially property crimes, people that are just careless with their car doors or their garage door, or just feeling too safe in their own environment until they're truly victimized. And we're trying to get the word out, and it's making a difference. I think it is, and I think it's representative of some of the numbers, that with respect to businesses and homeowners, taking more ownership of trying to protect themselves. And that's our goal.
The Ventura County Sheriff has had presence on Nextdoor.com. Has that been helpful to you guys, at least when it comes to getting the word out about things and/or trends, certain crime trends, or if there's a rash of burglaries in a certain neighborhood? Have you guys, you guys have been able to utilize that to communicate directly to specific neighborhoods that might be victimized in one way or the other?
Tremendously important and a huge upside, that information exchange where we get out critical data where there's been a burglary, or there's been a rash of crime, where it goes to those block captains and they disperse them to all the other residents. That's why we encourage everybody, if you're not part of a, you know, a neighborhood watch group and you want to initiate one, reach out to us. I mean, we'll gladly shepherd you along. But without the community's help and their involvement and their participation, you can't do it alone. And I have to say, for Camrio, residents have really stepped up and improved greatly in that area, and it's tremendous.
The DUI arrests going up 41%, do you think that more people are drinking and driving? Or have you guys stepped up your enforcement and approach to DUI, I don't know, arrest or, you know?
Right. So, what that number is really reflective, although I don't have the specific numbers, we're seeing more combo now with drug alcohol.
Okay.
Associated. So, that, we've seen an increase from 17 to 18 in that category specifically.
So, it's more, in many ways, it's probably fueled more by drugs than it is alcohol?
And mostly prescribed legal drugs.
Really?
And marijuana's in there as well.
Neighborhood watches, have those been very helpful?
Very helpful, yeah. Neighborhood watches, you know, the neighborhood watch groups, I mean, the more we can get people to communicate and talk and share their story and be the eyes and ears and see something, say something, the better off we're going to be. It's still an old-school method of trying to prevent crime, but I will tell you, the information that comes through that we can take immediate action on is what we need to catch people because you can't be on every street corner. So, yeah.
I've seen a lot of, I've seen kind of neighborhood watch programs develop over social media platforms, whether it be Facebook or Nextdoor, whereas there's usually, it's a handful, usually one or two individuals who've kind of taken upon themselves to be a direct line of contact with your office or the Ventura County Sheriff.
Right.
And kind of feeding their, their watch group or their social group, which tends to be their neighborhood.
Right.
Information. When it comes to, when it comes to stats and whatnot, where, if there are people in the neighborhood watch groups or people in general, if they're looking for information as to what's going on in their neighborhood or the broader Camrio area, where can we go and get information like this on a, on a, on a regular basis?
Well, just like you mentioned with those people that are the point of contact, our community resource sergeant and her detective, or it's Virginia Tenocca, senior deputy, she pushes out that information, that crime information. So, it's really just a matter of making that connection, getting the email addresses, and adding it to the group.
Can I, do you guys publish crime stats on a monthly or quarterly, obviously on an annual basis, but in a more regular basis?
No. They do it semi-annually, six-month and then annually.
And is that available to the public?
It is.
Like, would I be able to?
Yes.
I mean, not as a council member, but I'd be able to go get a copy?
No, it's a publicly published document.
Okay.
Yeah, the UCR is, right.
And then, I mean, this is all very, very good news. How does this benchmark against other communities like ours? I read in the newspaper that when you compare us, though, although our numbers are down, when you compare us to other communities in Ventura County that are similar in socioeconomic makeup, we still rank relatively high. And I'm wondering why, one, is that true? Two, what would you attribute to that? What makes us a candidate for that versus on the, you know?
You know, there's a lot of factors, obviously. You know, Camrio is an attractive place for crooks to come here and commit crimes. You know, it has the outlets, it has the neighborhoods that a lot of other communities don't have. So, we're constantly having to deal with these crews that are coming in and taking advantage of those opportunities. You know, every community has their challenges. As we know, crime is extremely cyclical with respect to, you know, one week seemingly everything is going well and crime is way down, and I could be back up here next month telling you the opposite because of what happened over a 72-hour period of time. I don't think there's one specific response that I can say, you know, why is Camrio where it's at exactly compared to a city of like size when we seem to be just a little lower? I do know that, again, Camrio is a rich environment. I think the southern criminal element certainly has found what they think is a haven to come here and commit crimes, and they're making their way up here and doing that. I think, you know, we're keeping stride for stride to the best of our ability to do what we can, but it's a tough fight, for sure.
Yeah, a never-ending one.
No.
Yeah.
No.
And we didn't, with the fires, the Hill Fire and the evacuation of Camrio Springs, we didn't see a rash of crimes as a result of people having to vacate.
No.
You guys kept that on lockdown.
In any of our evacuation areas, we're locked down very quickly, and there was no reports that I'm aware of that there was any looting or theft or criminal conduct based on those evacuations.
Excellent. That is all I have.
Mr. Tremblay?
Thanks, Commander Murray. I wanted to follow up on Ms. Santangelo's question because I had the same question, but I want to do a follow-up. First of all, you know, these are, these are really, this is excellent data and excellent overall statistics. I think my question is kind of informed by the most recent ride-along I did just a few months ago where the, one of the individuals during the shift that I was ride-along on, one of those individuals had just been arrested the prior day, had already, had already been out, was already out of jail and was being rearrested for the same offense. And your answer, I was trying to wrap my head around, why is there an 18% increase in arrests as opposed to the decrease in the Part I crimes? And I think your answer makes perfect sense, but there has been some very, very significant criminal justice legislation passed in the last several years, AB 109 and Prop 47, et cetera, where we tend to see the same crooks, I think. Is, is part of your answer, is that symptomatic of that legislation where we're seeing the same people recycling, for want of a better term, or recirculating back and forth?
It is, although we're not keeping the data on those statistics. But yeah, you're getting people out sooner. And keep in mind, you know, the opioid epidemic and narcotics on the street, I mean, our, under the influence arrests have basically doubled. And remember, when you start, when you start hitting that element really hard, keep in mind, those that are addicts, that are, that are under the influence and committing crimes, they're doing to maintain their habit and their lifestyle. And so, you can really carve into that once you start hitting, you know, that particular offense. So, that has been really a layer of success for us that, you know, if you come to the city and you get high and we catch you, you're going to jail, and it takes you out of play for a certain period of time. And you do that long enough, hopefully you get probation, you get a bigger crime, and all of a sudden, you know, they become a prolific offender, and then you get a bigger case. So, I think to your point, all of that is part of it. You know, the arrests certainly are going to help. The question remains, how long can you sustain that? Right? I mean, how long will that continue? We hope it maintains itself, but again, it's one of those things where, you know, you have to see what you're dealt and what you're up against, quite frankly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Comment.
Okay, comment time. Ms. Creighton?
I just want to thank you. I thought it was an excellent report.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Ms. Santangelo?
I'd like to thank you, too. And just personally, from my work experience, I know you especially go above and beyond with people that are really struggling, especially kids. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Mr. Moshe?
Yeah, I too want to say thank you. I particularly want to acknowledge the, how active I've seen personally and how it's, how it's impacted me. And the Ventura County Sheriff reaching out to the community and really trying to get this interaction and this buy-in from the community that you guys aren't bad guys, that you guys aren't here to just enforce and punish people for doing bad deeds, but that, you know, together, we can work together to make our community safer. So, I greatly appreciate the amount of communication and reach-out, particularly utilizing new technologies to get some of those, those younger people as well.
No, thank you very much for the comments, and it certainly is a privilege and honor to be able to serve the citizens of Camrio and a longstanding tradition, I might add as well. So, thank you all.
Mr. Tremblay?
I don't think the compliments are done yet, Commander Murray. I want to compliment you again on the excellent overall statistics, the ride-alongs that I've been along. Two things I want to impart to you. First, my experience with the deputies here in Camrio is that they are first-class. They, the way in which they exercise their discretion and their judgment, I think, is exemplary. And I think that also speaks to my second point, which is the level of training that the sheriff's office has and that the sheriff's deputies have. I don't know how to compare that to other law enforcement agencies. What I do know as a civilian is that it appears to me that that level of training is very high and it is continual. It's not just, you went to the academy and there you go. So, I really want to compliment you and underscore both of those points. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
David, just want to, again, commend you, and I know you always say that, you know, this is, this is a never-ending battle and we have to keep vigilant, but I especially want to commend you with Ms. Sherry, the homeless individual. And there's a lot of people here and a lot of people that watch this that had, including myself and many others up here, that had personal experiences with this individual. And where she was and where she is now is absolutely, it boggles my mind. I can't believe it. And when they first talked about that Project Hope, I thought, wow, okay, well, you know, we'll see how this goes. Well, man, this is one big win for Project Hope. And I got to tell you that there's several homeless people around the city that I deal with on somewhat of a continuous basis here, and it's a great program, and I believe your department's on the cutting edge of that, and I think you've also got some national awards on that. So, keep up the good work. I know that it's a challenge, but we have the right person at the right place at the right time in yourself. And I've been very impressed with the professional nature of your department. And please give the deputies and all the employees here our heartfelt thanks for what they do.
Thank you, Mayor. You certainly will.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is public comments time, so I'm going to call these up as they were submitted to me here. Again, it's three minutes, please, and if you keep your comments to three minutes, I'd really appreciate it. First is Matthew, Matt Lorimer. Yeah, Matt's here. Let me make sure the mic runs on. Yes, Matt, it is. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. As you know, my name is Matt Lorimer. Here to talk about the Camrio, Camrio, Camrio Ranch Foundation. This property is owned by the people of Camrio. They bring in between 700 to $1 million. They pay no rent. The city has put hundreds of thousands of dollars. I've asked for a public request, I believe it's $2 to $5 million. Let me share my personal experience of being at that board meetings. Board members have been vacant, board members leave early, and let me tell you what happened. We had an article done by the Camrio Acorn. So, this meeting turned into basically, Sean and Charlotte, why did you basically comment about the Camrio Ranch House? They proceeded to say they're public servants. Sean said, hey, look, we're, we're going to respond. Their response was by Karen Prouse and Ellen Smith. They basically said, if you have any comments, you need to direct them to the board. You're not to talk to the media, especially the Camrio Acorn. It was a beat-up session. I thought it was unprofessional. How dare they walk on people's rights? The next thing, it was a shakedown. And you know what I mean by that? Let me remind this city council, last year I asked for an investigation on Mike Morgan. He was handing out literature at that particular area. You know what happened at this meeting? Sean and Charlotte, basically, Sean was asked, why don't you write a check, a personal check? And let me tell you what that's called. That's called a shakedown. You don't ask a public official, a city-owned property, to write a check to an organization. I find that offensive. It should have not happened. Then it started down to why are you donating time? Again, very aggressive. And then during the meeting several times, what was brought up is why doesn't the city council write us a check? Well, let me just tell you something, they're losing money. My time is short, but I will continue this when it comes up again here shortly. Again, what went down there was highly improbable. And let me remind you something else. If you want to run for city council, if you want to run for the rent review board or the planning commission, you have to be a citizen. Somehow, they carved out an issue where five people don't have to live in the city of Camrio. So, let me see if I understand that. The rules don't apply, if you run for city council, any position in the city, you have to be a resident. But this board that's owned by the public has now five members for years that don't have to be residents of Camrio. My time is running out. I will continue what I'm saying later.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Yagnesh Parajapati. Yagnesh, you here?
Thank you.
Before you start, how'd that do on your pronunciation of your name?
Yagnesh.
Yagnesh. Thank you. Three minutes, if you would. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Yagnesh Parajapati. I'm here this evening to extend a, an invitation from Ventura Regional Sanitation District's General Manager, Chris Tyson. This invitation is to all council members, staff, community members. Versti would like for all you to join us in a walk to build a Ronald McDonald Room at the Ventura County Hospital. The Ronald McDonald Room will provide housing facilities such as sleeping.
Could you pull the mic down so we can hear you better?
There you go. Thank you. Thank you. The housing facility, free of charge to the families whose children are receiving care at the, or at the hospital, which serves all of Ventura County. Versti, as a leader in public service in the county, would love to see the unification of all public service entities for this great cause. The Walk for Kids is on Sunday, April 7th, with festivities starting at 7:00 a.m. at the State Beach in Ventura. I've left some information cards. And, let's see. Yeah, we look forward to seeing a team representing your city at the event, and if your agency leads in event donations, we'll be visiting you to deliver the Leading with a Heart Award. with a Heart Award. And the ways you can help is register to walk, to support a walker, to donate, became, become an event volunteer, or a sponsor. And, yeah, that's about it.
Thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good one.
Thank you. Next is Neil Dixon. There's Neil. I think you know the rules, so, thank you, Neil.
Hi, my name's Neil Dixon. I live on Gabriella Court in Camarillo. I'm here, first of all, thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to address the subject of districting. And the reason I'm here tonight, rather than two weeks ago, is because I, like many members of the public, were unaware that a public hearing was going on a couple of weeks ago. So I'm here to make my comments tonight. I became aware, as I was watching the City Council meeting on television. At that meeting, only, only one member of the public actually spoke on the subject of districting, a very important issue to the city. That member spoke for, in favor of, a model where there would be four districts and one at-large elected mayor. I agree with that position. I think that's the best position we could, we could take for our city. Remarkably, at the end of that comment by that speaker, and at the very first public meeting, all five City Council members took a position that we should have five districts and no, and no at-large elected mayor. I think that that was a little premature, that, at that juncture, to have made that decision already. It appeared that the council had already given direction to council to move along, to staff to move along those lines. And the Camerio Acorn did indicate that that was a done deal. And the Acorn indicated that there was going to be five districts, and there would be no mayor. I think that there are a lot of flaws in the five-district model. And I'm running out of time. I'm going to, I've got a lot of things to say. But the five-district model would allow a very small number of people to, to elect the City Council members. I sort of did the math on it, and if there were three people running, as few as 1,600 people could elect a council member to this, to this body. You multiply that times five, and you have 8,000 people have elected the entire City Council, which is less than, than elected each and every one of you. So I think that needs to be reconsidered. Also, each voter would only be able to vote once in every other election, rather than them being to vote five times in every, in the combination of the two elections, as it stands now. I think that model disenfranchises the voters. It allows a very, a very minority-elected City Council to lead the city. And I'm hoping that the city has not firmly, that we have not directed the staff to move along those lines, and that we are still reconsidering what the model is going to be. The, this is the last City Council that will ever be elected at-large. You have the power to form the government that is going to follow you. You can, I think that the five districts, five council members is flawed, and I think that you have the opportunity to create, to create a government that will take advantage of both the at-large model and the districting model. And that would be four council members and a mayor. And I hope that you're going to reconsider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor, do you want to address any of this, perhaps at the end of this, or do you want to wait to further time?
Mr. Dixon? Dr. Dixon? I think he's going to answer you.
Yeah, you would.
Yes, I can provide some information on this. With regard to the hearing on February 27th, I'm aware that the city made substantial efforts to get the word out with respect to that hearing. Ads were taken out, and the Acorn, the Ventura County Star, it was on the message board right out here outside City Hall on Constitution Avenue. It was on the city's Facebook page. It was on the city's website. It's, there was a flyer on all the counters in the City Hall. And I've only given you about half of what effort was made to put the word out. So unfortunately, apparently, you didn't receive that word. But there was, I just wanted to confirm for you that there was a substantial effort to do that. So there's a series of five public hearings that are set. The council took action on January 23rd of this year to set those five hearings. And they're on the city's website, and you can find those. All five of those hearings were noticed before the first hearing. And in addition to all of what I just said, before each hearing, as it's coming up, there's going to be another public hearing notice that goes out into the newspapers, and the public is going to be notified of that. As a matter of fact, I believe that the notice for the public hearing on March 27th is going to be coming out in a few days. And, and that pattern is going to continue. All of that community outreach that I just described to you is going to be done in advance of each of those five hearings. So the city is making substantial efforts to make that happen. Now, with respect to the number of districts, how many there should be, at the meeting on February 27th, the council did have a discussion about that, as they're permitted to do. However, I specifically made the point during that meeting, that that was a discussion item, that, that the council was not making a decision with regard to the number of districts. And I expressly stated that that decision could not be made at that meeting, that would have to come back for further discussion. And so you and other members of the public are certainly encouraged to present your points of view with respect to the number of districts, as you did tonight. So, that I'm clear, the next hearing is on March 27th. And at that time, there will be a discussion of all of the options for districting. The public is encouraged to attend. You, you and the rest of the public, hopefully can be there to express yourselves on how many districts you think there should be and why. The council will be considering your input, and, and will be making a decision on the 27th. The reason for that date, for the decision, is that the demographer who's going to be assisting the city in preparing the maps, needs to know how many districts there are, so that the maps can be drawn. You can't just tell the demographer to, you know, draw four districts, five districts, and seven, and so on. It's got to be a specific number, so that the demographer can then draw the number of districts. So that will happen at the meeting on the, on March 27th. It'll be at the 7:30 calendar.
Okay.
Am I allowed to respond to that, or does my time up?
Do you want, you all?
I, I would.
Can you get with him later, later in the, another time?
Well, if he has questions, I think, you know, we should, let's take, go on.
I will be very, very brief.
Okay, thank you.
I, thank you for clarifying that. The most important part of that was, is, is the issue of five districts a done deal or not? According to the Acorn newspaper, it is. And if it's not, I think that should be clarified.
Well.
Do you believe everything you read in the Acorn?
It's, you know, it does influence the public. It's, when they think it's, it's a done deal, then they think it's a done deal.
Well, I don't know if the Acorn reporter was here on the night of the 27th, or they got it from some other source. But I was here. And, and I know that it was made clear that the council was not making that decision. It was not a done deal. It is still an open question, which I'm reaffirming to you tonight. And, and you and the rest of the public are certainly encouraged to, to come to the council on March 27th and, and give your input as to how many districts you think are appropriate and why.
Absolutely. I'm just glad to know that it's still an open debate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is, I believe it's Carly Glazer. Carly here tonight? No, she is. Okay. If you could put that microphone right up. Appreciate it, Carly. Three minutes, if you would, please. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Kildee, honorable council members, and I thank you for your time this evening. My name, as you said, is Carly Glazer, and I have been proud to call Camarillo my home for the last decade. I've been a small business owner here in town for the last seven years. This is where I've started and plan to raise my family. It is my understanding that the council has been urged to, or has been asked to urge the Ventura County Fairgrounds to discontinue gun shows being held at the fairgrounds currently. I have attended several of the Fair Board meetings regarding this issue. I've been witness to many very emotional statements, and moved, and totally understand where people are coming from, and this is a very emotional issue. I have not heard any arguments explaining how ending gun shows would decrease gun violence, nor have I heard any evidence that holding the gun shows has increased gun violence or violence of any kind. Many against continuing the gun shows have stated that public land should not be used in supporting or exercising Second Amendment rights. My feeling, and what I'd like to express to you this evening, is that if public land is not to be used to exercise our constitutional rights, what then is its purpose? That's all I have for you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next is Lorena Greca? Did I pronounce that right?
Very close.
Grecia? Greca?
Guereka.
Guereka?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay. Again, if you could pull the microphone down, and if you keep three minutes, Lorena, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kildee, Vice Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name's Lorena, I'm with Vista Real Public Charter High School. I'm excited to be here today. I'm here to announce that our new Camerio Learning Center has a new location. We were previously located close to Ace Charter High School. We are now located at the Ventura County Community Foundation Building at, over at 4,001 Mission Oaks Boulevard. So Vista Real is a public high school. We offer independent learning, a safe educational environment, and flexible hours, so our students can focus on their studies. They also enjoy the one-on-one attention they get from their teachers, their tutors, and their mentors. And they also have the opportunity to participate in a number of career-based programs, workshops, and internships. We serve students ages 14 to 24. They can enroll anytime during the year, and our services are absolutely free. As I mentioned, we are a free public high school. We have been serving Ventura County for the last 10 years. We have seven locations, Oxnard, Poroyemi, Camarillo, Simi Valley, Santa Paula, and Toon, Ventura. In particular, in Camerio, we're excited, because like I said, we just moved, and we have a much bigger location to be able to serve more of our students here in the community. We have our summer program that's really popular as well. It's an excellent opportunity for students to come in and experience what, the independent learning structure that we have before committing to enrolling with our school. We offer a number of elective and core courses that allows them to either make up classes that they've failed or need to make up, or if they want to head, want to get ahead in classes as well. Anybody who's interested in enrolling in summer school can call one of our sites for more information. But I'm here to invite you guys, we're all have, we are having a grand opening this Friday at our new location. It's going to be from 11:30 to 2:00 p.m. The Camerio Chamber of Commerce will be present for the ribbon-cutting, so you can come and enjoy some arts, crafts. We'll have some music, we'll have lunch, and of course, we invite you to take a tour of our new site. I hope you guys can all join us. Thank you for your time tonight. And I did bring some flyers, not sure if I'm able to leave them with you. But the, the flyers both include information about the grand opening and our summer program. So I invite all of you, the community, to come out and look at our new location. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, I've got Dawn Cullinan. Is Dawn here tonight? Oh, there she is.
Hello.
Hello.
How's everybody doing?
Good. Dawn, if you could put the microphone down right up, that'd be great. And three minutes. Thank you.
Thanks for listening to me tonight. I also hear about the fairgrounds issue.
Put it up just a little bit. There you go.
Thank you.
Am I good now?
Yeah, it's good. Thank you.
With the, the gun show being, I'm understanding you guys are being asked to put together something to ask them to remove the gun show from the fairgrounds. Is that correct?
We're here to listen to you.
Okay. Well, if that is correct, then I'd like to take this opportunity to, to share with you that the fairgrounds have lost state funding, ours, and lots across California. And with the fairgrounds being right on the ocean, their maintenance for their buildings is higher, because they have to replace things more often, as the, the salt air deteriorates the buildings and plumbing and what have you. And so when you remove the gun show, when the fairgrounds are already on a tight, tight budget to try to maintain its building, you're removing $100,000 per year in revenue from the fairgrounds. So that is a huge amount, and maybe the straw that breaks the camel's back, so to speak, where maybe we don't have Ventura County Fair at all. Maybe all of those kids that are learning about agriculture don't have a place to bring their animals to show. And all the other wonderful things that the Ventura County Fairgrounds facilitate for the youth. The fact that then those thousands of 4-H, FFA kids that spend those numerous, numerous hours on their project, maybe now they're hanging out with some kids that aren't the best kids to hang out with, and finding guns of their own. So, in essence, it's a full-circle cycle. So I guess what I'd really like for the council to do is, before they decide to send out a letter as a blanket answer to gun control, to please look into the finances and the trickle effect. Every action has a reaction, and although something may help here, or you think it may help here, no matter what side of the opinion you're on for that, let's look at all the consequences of that action before, and weigh that against to what we think we're helping. So, if you guys would like any contact information, Chris Dryden is on the foundation board with the fairgrounds. I have his contact information, and he'd be happy to speak with any of you in more particulars about the budget, and how much the state cut, and all of those intricate details. So if you're interested in that, I can certainly leave it with you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, I don't have any more blue cards. Anybody would like to submit a blue card for public comments?
So should I?
Okay, next is Libby Higgins. Libby here tonight? Again, Libby, if you could keep it to three minutes, appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Libby Higgins. I'm a Camerio resident, and I'm here to speak to you about the Ventura County fairgrounds, and the gun shows held there. First, I want you to know that this debate has been going on for over a year now. There's been a lot of movement at the fairgrounds. In fact, we, they have gone down from five to six shows a year to about two to three. So the, they've found a way to generate revenue and make that up, and they've, they've seen that there are actually other options out there. The board has already made that decision. But what I wanted to talk to you about today was the fact that the fairgrounds board are not our representatives. They're not elected. They're not accountable to us. The people that are, are you all. You are our representatives, you are our voice. And if we were looking for just representatives to say something, frankly, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors has done that. So if it were up to our elected officials, then there wouldn't be gun shows right now, because they have made that statement, that they do not want to have them. But unfortunately, the fairgrounds board is not part of that system. The city of Ventura has also stated that they support the idea of no more gun shows. The city of Oxnard has stated that they support the idea of no more gun shows. And now we're asking that the city of Camerio, you all, consider that question. Not what, I'm not asking you to make the decision. What I'm asking you to do is put it on the agenda, have the discussion. It's a hard, hard discussion. This is not something that's going to be easy. It's not something that people feel comfortable with. But it's something that the community is asking for, on both sides, honestly. We're hearing it from everywhere, that both sides want to be talking about this, and they have good points. I believe that the Camerio residents have stood up and said, please do something about this and be our representatives, be our voice in this matter. In fact, I sent you earlier today a petition that is circling around Ventura County. There's nearly 3,000 signatures on it, to end gun shows at the fairgrounds. And Camerio residents, there's nearly 300, and going up quite literally daily, the number of residents signing on to this. So it's something that our community is talking about, and I believe for that reason, and because the fair, the Board of Supervisors has specifically asked that each city weigh in on this, I believe that it makes sense. This is within your jurisdiction. You are part of the county. Without the cities, there is no county. They are asking each city to stand up and say where they stand, and listen, and have the discussion with their residents. So I please ask you to add it to your agenda. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
I'm a husband. I'm a father. I'm an uncle, and I'm a fierce defender of everything that I hold dear to me. And one of those is civil rights, civil rights for all humans. And the attack against the Second Amendment in this country is disgusting. The gun shows that I've been to, and I have been to quite a few of the ones in Ventura County, are very highly regulated in this state. There is no gun show loophole, period, end of story, in this state. It is a felony under current California law to even offer for sale a firearm from one private person to another. I just made a trip to Idaho, which is a very gun-friendly state, in the month of January, and I went, attended one of their gun shows. And I looked for the loopholes that are talked about. I could not find a single loophole in that gun show. Every single table had a flyer on it that said, "Background check required." I asked people if I could purchase a firearm to see if there was these gun show loopholes that they talk about. Not one person was offering any loopholes. I sincerely appreciate every person that's bringing this to your attention because I don't want to see any more people killed due to any type of violence. The city of Oxnard and the city of Ventura have taken issue with this, but we have a different situation in the city of Camrio. We don't have the same violence. The sheriff's commander that was just here was showing you numbers that don't reflect those other two cities. Those two cities infringe on people's Second Amendment rights all the time. The city of Ventura just said you can't open up gun, another gun store. The city of Oxnard did the same thing. And they're being pressured by anti-Second Amendment groups to facilitate that type of legislation. And as someone that has lived in this community for 40 years and has never come before you, I'm a fierce defender of all civil rights for all human beings. So I urge you to stand with law-abiding citizens. We are the majority. The people that live in this community do want their civil rights. If it's the Second Amendment that's taken away at the gun show, the next thing is, what books can somebody read? What religion can somebody practice? And I won't stand for it, not in my community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next is Chris Seller. Chris, again, three minutes if you would, Chris. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Libby Higgins was just mentioning that we should bring this up as a, the people want to have their voice. Sometimes not saying something is a voice of its own. And I know this, the whole reason that these people are here tonight are at the behest of Ms. Susan Santangelo because I know, behind closed doors, no, none of you wanted to author this said letter to the fairgrounds. Now, of all the hills you can die on in this, in this city, Susan, with the districting safe harbor failure from Mr. Bryan over there, not to mention the gaping loopholes in this districting. Springville has 401 residents? Yeah, right. How about the prison condos Jan McDonald mentioned? How is there zero people there? No one's moved in? And how are you going to draw effective districts if there's no one there? How about 10 years of, a loss of 8,000 net jobs? That's another hill you could die on. How about the CRF operating on deposits because this city denied them funding, which to me seems like a Ponzi scheme because ultimately, this city is responsible for any deposits used. They're going to have to fulfill the obligation, and then you guys are going to have to write a check once they run out of money and they can't run operations anymore. So ultimately, this council will be responsible, one way or another, to cover those liabilities. How about the housing seminary exceeding the cap? Instead of 240, we did 288. As a nice little F-U to the citizens that voted two council members out. 15 years, no desaulter. Last year, I came before this council and said, "Where's the desaulter?" 15 years in. And right now, we still haven't had a shovel hit the ground on that project yet. And also to boot, the city staff underbid the project by 40%. So now, when we go to rebid, every contractor's going to know what was bid before, and there's going to be more potential for them to inflate their bids going forward. You can send all the minions you want here, Susan, but we're going to come here and confront them every time that you guys try to do your underhanded tactics. We're not, it's not, it's not something I enjoy doing. I'd rather be home walking my dogs right now. I don't want to be here. I don't want to be that guy that comes to the council meeting and sounds like the angry man. I'm here because my, I feel my rights and the county's, the people of this county's rights are going to be trampled because someone else doesn't want to have something that they deem offensive. What happens when we deem their speech is not welcomed in this town? What about, oh, you know, we can search their house, but this house is okay, you know, without a warrant? So you can, you've chosen the wrong hill to die on in this town. There's so many other things you could have chosen to die on as far as a political.
Excuse me, mister.
Appreciate your comments.
May.
Yes.
I need to have him, I need to ask him a question. You made a statement that people were here because you knew a decision had been made behind closed doors, and nobody wanted to back a proposal or write a letter or something. And I want to know where you heard that because this council has never discussed this in closed session behind any kind of doors that I know.
I heard a rumor. I don't know. I mean.
Well, you made a statement that it happened, so.
Well, I heard a rumor, so perhaps I did a false, not false, but overstated the facts there.
Well, if anybody, if they talked about it, they didn't include me. I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we have not discussed that matter.
Okay.
Bev Dransfield is, Bev's here. Bev, I know you know, but three minutes if you would. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking the time to, to listen to the public. Charlotte, I would really like to thank you especially for providing that clarification. I think it's really important that we stick to the facts, that what the council is doing up here, and especially to accuse another council member of something that hasn't even happened. Susan has not even spoken tonight on this issue. It has not been brought up. So for Chris to come up here and, and to blame her for that is just, it's unnecessary, really. I do believe in the Second Amendment. I do believe in the right to bear arms. However, that is, while it is one of our rights, that's not what's a discussion here today. No one is trying to take anyone's guns away. All it is, is just one avenue that, that is up for discussion. Again, this is a letter and the Board of Supervisors and whatnot. So it's not infringing on anyone's rights. Again, it's just having a discussion. And if anything, and I don't know how this all works, but I would think by not having as many gun shows, it would be beneficial to our local business, to our local gun shop to, since it would provide hopefully more business to them. I, I'm just, I'm, I, I just really am a little frustrated by this incident, mostly because I didn't plan on speaking. However, I am not going to allow a council member to be attacked under false pretenses, and I do want there to be clarity and transparency. That's what so many of the council members have run on. And even so, each council member is allowed to have their topics that, you know, have their projects that they are passionate about. That's why we elected them. Again, thank you so much for your time. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay. One more. Briann?
Hyatt.
Hyatt, is it Hyatt? Am I right on that? Oh.
Sorry.
That's okay. Again, Briann, if you wouldn't mind the three minutes, I appreciate it.
Of course. Mine will be really short because I was not planning on speaking, but I did want to make sure. I was born and raised in Camrio, so I've been here my whole life. Both of my parents served for over 30 years on the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. So I'm very passionate about the Second Amendment and our rights. I don't think we have a gun problem. I think we have an education problem. So I think it would be beneficial for people to educate the use of guns. That's how I was raised. That's how I grew up on guns, going to gun shows and my dad teaching me everything I know about guns. I wasn't even allowed to touch a gun until I knew all of the range rules. And that is, this is my three-year-old daughter who could recite those range rules for you right now. So it's really important that I think that people stay educated and continue their education on gun instead of just affecting everyone who owns a gun by trying to ban them or trying to ban them going to these shows. I just think it's something that people should think about. It might not be a gun problem or gun control. It might be an education problem. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Jean Roland. Jean? Again, Jean, if you would, wouldn't mind the three minute, please?
Of course. I'm Jean Roland. I've lived in Camrio for 43 years, and I've never had an excuse to come to a city council meeting before, but I'm happy to be here. I hadn't planned on speaking. I will tell you that I am a supporter of the Second Amendment, but I am also greatly concerned about gun violence issues. And just as a matter of fact, Ms. Santangelo did not ask me to be here. I'm here because I want to be here. And I think that was an unfair thing to be said. Putting that aside, I think it's imperative that we acknowledge that we have gun violence issues. It happened just over the hill. I don't feel safe in Camrio anymore. I used to feel safe here. We have to talk about it. If you can put it on the agenda so we can have discussions, civil discussions about it, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Just bring it, and let's discuss it, both sides. We need to talk about it. It's, it's a scary time. Did you know anybody who died at Borderline? It's terrifying. That could happen here. I used to think the Parkland and Sandy Hook, that could never happen here, but it happened here. We have to address it. We have to talk about it. Gun violence is real. And, and while I don't want to take anybody's guns away, I have read in the CDC report that, that there is a direct correlation between gun availability and gun violence. The accessibility to guns and gun violence have a direct correlation. I, I'm not saying that. That's the CDC report. That was a conclusion that they drew out of their study. So basically, I'm just asking you to, to keep an open mind, and let's talk about it. Put it on the agenda. Let's have discussions. And if it comes out that you can join the cities of Oxnard and Ventura, and you can join the Ventura County Board of Supervisors in a letter supporting the less, supporting the idea of less availability of guns in our community, then that would be super. But we'll never know unless we have the discussion. So thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. One more here? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to try to do this name right. Is it John, John, John? Okay. Is it?
Morehouse.
Morales? Yeah.
Morehouse.
Morehouse. Okay, John. Okay, welcome. And three minutes if you would, John, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Kind of a last-minute thing to come up here. The conversation that's went on tonight has kind of drove me to step up here, and a lot of it stems from the, the talks of the Ventura County Fairgrounds gun shows. As stated earlier, the gun shows, there is no loopholes. There's no ways to get around. It's no different than going to a local gun shop in, in any part of the state and buying a firearm. So by, I guess, you're just being asked to write a letter, but if you write a letter or to stop these gun shows or to ban them at the, the fairgrounds, it's, it's not stopping anything that's not already going on at a gun shop. So there's, in my opinion, there's really no positive effect of whether it continues or doesn't continue. It doesn't change the way anything else operates around here. As stated earlier, it brings in, it brings in revenue for the, for the fairgrounds so they can continue to help the, the community, help the kids, help with lots of different avenues for people to be entertained and, and take their 4-H animals, their FFA animals, that kind of stuff. The other thing I would think is, is we heard from different people, both sides. I don't know if there's a way to, I guess this is the form for people to show up and give you their opinion, and so you guys can get a feel for what the, the city itself feels. But I don't know if there'd be a way to put out a vote or come up with a way that, like I said, the city actually feels. Because here, we obviously have a real small part of the city, and it's definitely split. So I think it'd be a good idea to try and figure out a way to get more information. I'm, I'm not real hip on how to do that, whether there was a flyer or people, that you could put up some kind of survey on the, the website or something like that. But I would encourage the, the council, before you were to write a letter, to make a decision or to have your discussion, to, to really get the whole feel for the entire community. For me, like I said, this is my first time here. It's one of the reasons I came here and stepped up here is because it's something I strongly believe in, and I think it would, it would really benefit you guys to get the voice of the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All you guys need to come to all our meetings.
Briann, if you wouldn't, no applause. We, we typically do that because we want to be fair to both sides of the issue here. So I'd appreciate it if you'd follow the decorum if you could, as explained. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to come up and address the council on any issue during public comments? Okay, so that gets us down back on our regular agenda. It's item eight. It's a city attorney, and we're at the Camrio Ranch Foundation Bylaws Amendment. Do we have a staff report? Mr. Barrick, are you going to take this one?
Yes, I've got this one. So the Camrio Ranch Foundation bylaws currently provide for two non-voting members of the board to be members of the city council. Currently, that's Councilmember Craven and Councilmember Mulchay. They are designated in the bylaws as non-voting board members. However, due to recent changes in the law, that bylaw will need to be revised. And in the staff report, gender report, we discuss the two options that are available in that regard. One of the options is with regards to a city liaison representative. And the other option, which is option two, would be to make the ex officio members voting members rather than non-voting members. So what you see on the slide here is the current language, which is redlined at the bottom. As I mentioned, it currently provides for the ex officio, non-voting members of the board. The proposed language that you see at the top, and I'll take the time to, to read through that so that everybody's focused on it. This is found in Section 4 of the bylaws. It's on big page.
Six?
Well, it's on page three, and it's also, because we really meant it, on page six. So here's the way it reads. Section 4, City Liaison Representatives. Two members of the city, Camrio City Council designated by the mayor and approved by the city council will serve as city liaison representatives to the foundation. Such representatives will not be members of the board and will not have any voting rights at the board meetings. So that particular sentence addresses the change in the law. However, it was thought that there might need to be some further clarification as to what the liaison role should be, so I'll continue. Their role will be to provide input and advice to the board on behalf of the city and the city council, and to report on foundation activities to the city council. City liaison representatives to the foundation shall serve for two-year terms, provided that a city liaison representative may be removed at any time with or without cause by a majority vote of the city council of Camrio. City liaison representatives shall continue to be members of the council during their tenure. I should mention that this proposed amendment, both of them, the, the option one and option two, were presented to the Camrio Ranch Committee, which consists of Charlotte Craven and Sean Mulchay. On February 20th of 2019, there was a discussion at that point, and the recommendation, which I'll allow the council members to elaborate upon as they choose, was to go with option one, which is the one that you see up on the, on the slide. So the process now is, under the Articles of Incorporation... I'll allow the council members to elaborate upon as they choose, was to go with option one, which is the one that you see up on the slide. So, the process now is, under the Articles of Incorporation for the Camarillo Ranch Foundation, it allows for the amendments, for the bylaws to be amended. And the way that happens is that the Camarillo Ranch Board would adopt a resolution to approve the amendment, or at least consider approving the amendment, after the amendment is first approved by the city council. So the way this would work is if the council should take action tonight to approve the proposed amendment, it would then be presented to the ranch board for them to make a decision as to whether to approve the amendment or not. So the suggested action tonight is to approve option one, which is the amendment to Article Five, Section Four of the Camarillo Ranch Foundation bylaws to provide for two city council members to serve as city liaison representatives to the Camarillo Ranch Foundation Board. And the attachments include the red line, which is before you here, as well as the Articles of Incorporation. And I'm available to respond to any questions.
Before we get into the questions with other council members, Brian, we are doing this specifically because the state has changed the criteria for this. Is that correct?
Yes. The change in the state law is that you cannot have non-voting members. So either, there's two choices. Number one is you have them designated as voting board members, which is basically option two, or something else. Something else is the city liaison representative, as you see it here, where it's specified as to what their role would be, but they will not be voting members.
So we can specify what their role will be, though, within that new state stature, then?
Yes, you can do what we're recommending, yes.
Okay. Okay, so it's question time? Is there any questions of the staff?
I have committee comments when it's time.
Mr., do you want to wait? Okay. Mr. Tremblay, do you want to?
I'm sure Mr. Perick.
Fine, yeah. We'll get to the committee comments.
Mr. Perick, do you see a difference legally speaking between the concept of liaison versus concept of ex officio?
Well, legally, the difference would be, if you're asking for the differences between option one and option two, okay, then I misunderstood your question.
If we refer to someone as an ex officio, my thought is that essentially that is the same thing as a liaison. It's really not fundamentally different. If they're, let me amend that. If they're ex officio non-voting, that is another way of saying that they're a liaison. Am I correct on that legally?
Well, I think you make a good point, and my answer to you would be this. In order to avoid the confusion that might arise with regards to what the role of an ex officio member would be, that's part of the motivation behind the city liaison representative language that you see here. And what I can tell you is that you have two options tonight, and you could choose to make the two representatives from the council on the board voting members under option two, or go with option one, which would be that they would be city liaison members.
Could I, could I tag on to what he's saying? Because we got different information at the committee.
Are you, can?
I'm done with my questions for now.
Okay. Mrs. Craven?
At the committee, we had a different report than is in here. And it said, it had a series of questions, and I believe it was from Mr. Davis. And he said that ex officio means non-voting. But we had given the board member, and in all the discussion and the way it was written, was that they had all the privileges of being a board member, except they could not vote. That meant we could go into closed session. So that's the distinction, Mr. Tremblay.
I should clarify that the agenda report that you have here was based on the one you saw at the committee, so I'm not sure what the source of that confusion might be, but...
I can only react with what I read in the staff report.
Okay, yes, I understand that. But I was trying to explain why we voted the way we did.
Yeah, no, I understand. Okay.
We being the committee.
So basically, let me say this to try to clarify, as we indicate in the agenda report, that under section 5047, ex officio members of a board would have full rights, including voting rights, as other directors. So the bottom line is, the choice is, if you want to, you can choose option two and have your board members with voting rights. You cannot have non-voting members, board members, any longer. Or, if you wanted to choose option one, they would then be city liaison representatives.
And, non-voting?
Non-voting.
Any other questions? Mr. Mulchay?
More of a comment to piggyback on Mrs. Craven's. It's my understanding that this, and it was, and Charlotte, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was our intention to change this in order to be as best in compliance with changing state law in how they recognize board members and what they're called, while still keeping true to effectively what we have been up to this point in our role. So that's my understanding of this change. Would that understanding be correct, Mr. Attorney?
Well...
But we don't vote now.
You're non-voting members now. You would be non-voting when you, as we say on the board here, that such representatives would not be members of the board.
Correct.
And you would not have voting rights. You currently don't have voting rights. So you are at a crossroads. Either you, you need to make a change, and so either you are going to be an ex officio member of the board with voting rights, which is option two, or a city liaison representative, which is option one. So because of the change in law, we cannot remain with the current bylaw. You need to make a choice between option one or option two.
But under option one, we should still be, our duty does not change, and the role in which we play in interfacing from the city side to the CRF does not change.
Well, the current language in section four of the bylaws, which is the one that's stricken out and red on the bottom, I would have to say that's different than what you see above that's not stricken out. The stricken language talks about them being ex officio non-voting members. It talks about the term that they serve and that they can be removed. What I'm calling option one, which is the city liaison, has a substantial amount of description in it about what the role would be. So I guess the best I can say is that the existing bylaw doesn't provide the detail that the proposed bylaw does. And my understanding is, based on the conversation that I was hearing at the committee, was that they favored the proposed city liaison representative, and one of the main reasons was it had the detail in it as to what the role would be of the city liaison representatives, rather than to leave it ambiguous.
Anything else, Mr. Mulchay?
No, I may come back, though.
Okay. Ms. Santangelo?
So I don't know who to ask this of, and I'm going to claim some ignorance. Why wouldn't we want to be voting members?
Can we answer that, or is that a question to the...
It's to anybody who can answer it.
I'm certainly prepared to answer that, but I think my answer on that would be premature. Because maybe there are, we may have speaker cards, we may have...
Yeah. Why don't we hold?
Does the attorney have anything to say?
I'm ready, Mr. Mayor, to answer that from my standpoint.
Well, I think that's a good point. Maybe we could hold that for just a minute.
I think I could answer that question, if I understood the question. The answer is you could choose either one of these options. Either one are legal. So it's your choice. You could choose option one, or you can choose option two. That's your choice. It's up to the council. It's your discretion.
We can get back to a little bit more discussion on that matter, too. Is there any other questions to Mr. Perick right now? I do have a speaker card. It's Matt Lorimer. Matt's here. And then, Matt, you know...
I'm gonna get right to the chase, folks. The Camarillo Ranch has been losing money. They should be paying $10,000 a month, minimum. The city is on the hook for millions of dollars. And let me remind you, not one ranch board member is here in the audience. Nobody. Nobody's here. Why is that? Because they're losing money. They lost money in February. They lost money in January. They keep losing money. They've lost millions of dollars, okay? The city, we have user fees. If you're a citizen or a business owner, you have to pay a fee to recover the services the city provides, the personnel, the infrastructure. This organization should be basically put on hold. I think the contract should be canceled. I think it's time either the Park District or somebody else stepped forward. I think they should pay $10,000 a month. You are elected officials. This organization is losing money, okay? And this, we're talking about this, let me tell you something. How are you gonna affect change, Mr. City Attorney? They're losing money. Should they vote, not vote? What about the viability of this organization? I've heard nobody. Do you realize at the board meeting, two members of the city council were asked to write personal checks? Do you know what that is? Basically, what are you saying? Hey, write us a check and maybe you can hand out literature. Nobody did that investigation on Mr. Morgan. By the way, nobody answered the situation. Why this organization, by the city of Camarillo, allows five board members not to live in the city council? Basically, not to live in the city, yet they're on this board. There's a lot of unanswered questions about this organization, okay? No accountability. They asked them to donate time. They asked repeatedly during that meeting, they constantly said the city needs to hand over a check every month. This organization is a failure. And it's a failure because the city council for years, Kevin, you talked about 15-cent postage stamps two weeks ago. This organization is bleeding money. The citizens of this community have been sent... You look at the amount of money we've thrown away on this organization. What is their purpose? Are they serving students? What are they here? Are they here to pay $450,000 for board members? I mean, for the person running the ranch? I'm telling you, it's a failed institution. You guys are talking about this, but I haven't heard anybody ask the two councilmen what went down that night. They were asked to write a check. They were constantly, comments were made, that the city should write a check. This organization has not worked. Let's face it. When you have a problem, deal with it. You're the city council. Why are you walking away from voting or not voting? The question is, it's losing money. You are elected. We got rid of three councilmen. You know why? Because people got tired of things running this community. This organization needs an overhaul. You have a responsibility as elected officials to clean it up, and it's time to close it down.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, does anybody else have any, would like to speak on this? Okay. So with that, Counselor, if you could again restate what our options are here before we get into discussion and/or any more questions?
I'd be glad to do that. Option one is the one up on the board that I read about the city liaison representatives. It is somewhat lengthy. There's a number of sentences in it, but part of the reason for that is to provide some clarity, if you will, as to what the role of the city liaison representative is. Option two would be the same as what's lined out, except it wouldn't be lined out. The only thing that would be lined out is the words "non-voting." So it would read "ex officio members of the board," in which case they would be voting members. So that is option two.
Okay. Thank you. Now, are there any other questions to Mr. Perick on that? Okay. So let's get into some discussion on this. I know that there is committee comments. I don't know if you want to make any more of your committee comments, but it would be appropriate if you would now.
Yeah, there was a question as to why you wouldn't want to vote on it, and I can tell you why we set it up to begin with. It was set up as a CO1...
I would want to...
501(c)(3), excuse me. Nonprofit corporation by the city. And the city council chose, chooses, started choosing then and still chooses the board members. I think we probably will have more discussions on the organization, the structure and things at a later date, but right now we're talking about the city representatives to the board. At the time we set it up, we felt that 15 members of the community would be a good number to establish the organization. They didn't need 17 voting members. The two members were designated, really, to do exactly what is defined up there, to represent the city. The city owns the property, as Mr. Lorimer pointed out, to represent the city on the board, and then to bring back to the city council things they think was, things that were important, that should be reported to the city council. And so I think that, you know, that's why during the committee, I was meeting, I felt we should go with the way it's worded up there.
Okay.
And Sean's the other member.
Yeah, and as the other member of that committee, yeah, I was supportive of this as well, in that I didn't, I personally don't think that the city council members should be voting members on the board. It's not the way it was originally set up. I'm comfortable with leaving it that way while still conforming to minute changes in law and definition of members on the board. I think we can still perform our function, just as we have in the past, going into the future with this type of language and this change.
Okay. Any other, Ms. Santangelo, if you would like to?
Not to. I'm still trying to get a better reasoning, other than that's just the way we've done If there's discussion about how we need to make some changes with the foundation, and that's on the horizon, I'm wondering, and I don't know the answer, I'm not saying that I do, I'm just wondering, would the effect of having two voting members help with decision-making? So I'm putting that out there as discussion.
You'd have two out of 17.
Well, there's a reason that they've been designated non-voting or voting. I mean, there's a reason. I would hope there's a reason we're making these decisions, not...
I think the reason we were put there to begin with, and I was not one of the original designees, but I think that the, you and Mike Morgan were, if I remember. I think the reason we were put there to begin with was to, to be blunt, find out what they were up to. And they set their meeting date on one of our council meeting nights.
Yeah, they did.
Until we had them change it. There was a little dissension there.
I personally see several conflicts of interest, potential conflicts of interest in serving on a nonprofit that, in many cases, well, one, we are the landlord of that property. Two, they, in some cases, you could say maybe directly, and it's definitely indirectly benefit from decisions that we make. I don't know any other situation, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know of any other situation where we sit on, where board members, sorry, council members currently sit on a nonprofit who, you know, is the recipient of either money or services directly, or so, more directly, indirectly, if that makes any sense.
Well, if I could...
Boys and Girls Club?
If I could, I'm sorry. If I could chime in a little bit. One of the issues, especially since the board appoints the board members, that...
The council.
This council board, this council board, council, you're absolutely right, appoints the members of this. And part of what was, at least in theory there, that we wanted to go there and not have undue influence over that board. And we were there to do some facts there, to be part of the discussion, to lead some direction, but be somewhat independent of the board so they wouldn't feel that two council members are looking over their shoulder and basically dictating policy there. So that was part of what the independence was thought, that it was very important that the city council, because we appoint the board of directors there, that we are independent thinking here and not have undue influence. board of directors there, that we are independent thinking here and not have undue influence. That was part of what the reasoning was on that. Mr. Tremblay, did you want to?
It's time for comments?
Comments? Yes. Mr. Tremblay.
I've hung back. Having been involved in nonprofits for many years, frankly, this, to me, this law change, and Mr. Perick has nailed it in terms of the law, but the law change frankly is, strikes me as kind of legislative engineering by the legislature. There are some semantic differences here. Because pragmatically, the ex officios have always operated in a non-voting independent role. And so, under option one, that would not change. And what Sean says about a change because of the state law while staying true to what you've been doing, I think accurately, when the committee says that, that's an accurate reflection of what has been done. In context, I'm disappointed to hear about what happened at the last CRF board meeting, as it has been described. And it doesn't sit well with me. And I think it's fair for me to make that comment in the context of this issue for a couple of reasons. Our two council members who sit on that board do not deserve to be criticized for voicing any concerns that you have voiced about the foundation. As far as I'm concerned, Sean and Charlotte are serving in an independent role. And I don't, we can call it ex officio, we can call it liaison, we can call it whatever we want to call it, but that is the role that they're playing. Because they, why are they acting as liaison or ex officio? Because they're, this council's eyes and ears to that foundation. They don't need to vote on issues, in my opinion. And in fact, I would argue that they can be more independent if they do not have voting power. And I see it that way, Susan. That was going to be my, that was going to be my response to you a few minutes ago. In formal terms, there is a legal operating relationship between this city on the one hand and the Camry Ranch Foundation on the other. And I have to keep that in mind, because it's an arms-length relationship. And that needs to be recognized and respected. I think it's important that everyone work together. We want to see the foundation succeed. And I value, and I appreciate the efforts by the, of the foundation board members, because they're volunteers. They don't get paid for their time. That said, I also really appreciate Sean and Charlotte's efforts, because it's a, it's a, it's a challenging board to sit on in the context of what has been going on lately. The ranch home and the site is a public asset. And as such, it's incumbent upon our council representatives to play an independent role. And that includes speaking their mind about the foundation. So as far as I'm concerned, option one best serves that purpose. And I agree with the recommendation that's before us by the, by the committee. I think having them as liaisons, non-voting liaisons, lets them fulfill that role best. Their best role is as an independent. They get to call them like they see them. And I, I'm sensitive, I'm also sensitive to the conflicts issue that you mentioned, Sean. I get that, and I, I agree with that. So I rely on both Sean and Charlotte to do this on behalf of the council. And I think our best move is option one.
Any other comments? I'll make a comment then. I agree. I think that option one is, at this point, the best option. I do think that they're significant problematic if you have voting members. I do think that there would be some conflicts in that. Remember, they are all volunteers there. We do appoint them. And we're here to look at the operation of that. And the two members, two current members, and the two members that have been in in prior years have done an outstanding job as far as what their role is here. Now, there'll be some further discussions with this whole process here. But as of tonight, it would seem to me that our best option is number one.
Your honor, I want to clarify something. The 15 board members do not get paid, and they're all volunteers, but they do have a significant staff, and they are paid.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The directors do not get paid. So with having made that clarification, I will move to approve option one for amendment to Article Five, Section Four of the Camry Ranch Foundation Bylaws, to provide for two city council members to serve as city liaison representatives to the Camry Ranch Foundation Board.
There's a motion and a second. Is any further discussion on this? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, that gets down to nine. It's the city manager, it's the senior in Community Recreation Facility Needs Study, the cooperative agreement. Do we have a staff report on it?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On July 14, 2017, the city and PVRPD entered into a cooperative agreement to commission a senior in Community Recreation Center Facility Needs Assessment Study. The study recommended three plans to, or three alternatives to create more space for activities. These plans ranged anywhere from 14,000 square feet to approximately 69,000 square feet, with about 32,000 square feet right in the middle. Both the city and the district chose what is known as Plan Two, or that second tier of approximately 31,000 square feet, to meet the community's needs for additional senior and community recreation space. However, both bodies were concerned, and rightfully so, about the $29 million price tag, or preliminary cost estimate of construction of Plan Two. Excuse me. After staff did some additional review of the cost estimation, we believe that cost estimation to be greater than what we think it should be. And so upon the recommendation of the liaison committee that's working on this, which is comprised of two council members and two PVRPD members, the district issued an RFP from Qualified California Licensed Architectural firms to further refine, with public input, the Plan Two concept, to create specific design concept alternatives, conduct parking analyses, and calculate refined cost estimates. The liaison committee has recommended the hiring of LPA architects for this work, and the district approved LPA's contract at their meeting on March 6. The attached cooperative agreement, which is before you, was also approved by the district on March 6, and details the responsibilities of the city and the district in the performance of a plan and cost refinement study for proposed Plan Two. As in the 2017 agreement, the cooperative agreement for Plan Two refinement requires that each party appropriate 120% of each party's half of the architect's contract to accommodate additional work that may be desired beyond the approved scope of work. Prior to the approval of additional work, the district must consult with the liaison committee. The city's not-to-exceed cost in this cooperative agreement is $114,269, which will require an appropriation from the city's general fund, undesignated fund balance. That concludes staff's report.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Tremblay.
Couple of questions from Mr. Norman. And they could also go to Mr. Vaca, too, because I know both of you were present during the, during the committee's interviews. First of all, on big page 22 of the contract, it's fair to say that in this process, which follows the needs assessment logically, there are going to be a series of community workshops whereby there will be public input into this process, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And secondly, on big page 23, there, the cost estimates that are going to be provided by the architect are going to be for, they will be rough order of magnitude construction cost range for the project for up to four different concept plans, right?
That's correct.
So we're not stuck with just one concept plan, but we have four separate concept plans?
Correct.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Mulshee?
Yeah, and to what Tony was saying, if, if we're able to stick to this project's schedule by July of 2019, we should be able to pretty well define what this project would look like.
Yes.
And we're very confident in this timeline. Or we're confident in the confidence of the architects, that they can meet this, this timeline.
The timeline.
Yes, we believe so. There are some considerations. You know, it is difficult to, to schedule the liaison committee at times, because we are talking about two very busy public bodies. But if everyone can make room in their schedule, it'll certainly help.
Excellent. That's all I have.
Any other questions? I have one question. It's on the severability of the contract. My understanding, maybe this is...
He's walking down the hall.
He's coming back down.
Maybe Mr. Norman can probably answer that.
Answer. There he is.
Oh, there he is. Either one, that both sides have to agree to sever this contract if they find some issues with it. One side cannot mutually pertain and act on that without the, you know, the concurrence of the other side.
Which, which contract? Are you talking about the cooperative agreement or the architect's contract?
I'm talking about the cooperative agreement.
What page were you on?
Right here. I was on page, let me get that for you. Hang on here. I had it here. Let's see, where are we, maybe? Page 14, 9.5. I'm just, basically what I'm asking is, since both sides are putting up money on this, if, if it were to need to be, if one side, can one side act mutually exclusive of themselves and not basically talk to the other side? That's basically what I'm asking.
Well, if that was a question for me, that section 9.5 is a severability clause. So that just basically means if there's one clause that gets removed, that, that doesn't necessarily invalidate the entire agreement. And so I thought I had heard that there may be a question about termination of the agreement.
Yeah, termination.
So there is a section, 7.4, that's on big page 12, that addresses the issue about, says the district may at any time during the term terminate the consultant services with or without cause.
I'm sorry. We're talking about two different things here.
We really are.
Yeah. The mayor is talking about the cooperative agreement and not the architect's agreement, of which you are talking about.
Well, I was going with the page number he cited.
Yes, he's citing the wrong page number.
Okay, well then.
Okay. So to answer, yeah, to answer your question, it's simply this, is that when we're operating within the cooperative agreement, the district cannot take unilateral action, and neither can the city. If anyone acts outside of the agreement, they bear their own cost in that action.
Mr. Tremblay, did you have something you wanted to add? Okay, yeah, that was the question. Kind of a circuitous route to get my question answered here. Okay, so I do have, I know there's representatives of the Park Board, but I do have one card on this. It's Matt Lorimer's here. Now, Matt, I'm three for three tonight with you.
You know, it's that kind of night. So let me tell you, I ran for city council three times. I didn't make it, but I did accomplish one thing, is to move the ball. You know, I walked this community, and when I walked it, several seniors talked to me. I went to the senior center many years ago. And they said, you know, we can build a great library, we can build a great school, we can build a great park, but what about us? What about the seniors in this community? You know, you're right. When you watch your friend die on a beach in Normandy, it's tragic. And when you live on a budget, it's tragic. When you're a nurse, and you work all your life, and you have a limited income, your husband dies, a family member, and you go to the senior center to play bingo, you go on trips, you do exercises, it's the most important thing. In life, you can't forget every demographic. I fought for years. I had councilmen tell me, you're crazy. Other candidates said, you're out of your mind. Why do you keep running on a senior center? You know why? Because I fell in love with a bunch of people who've worked their whole damn life and want and deserve a place to go to at the end of their life, who can't afford to go on fancy trips or trips. You know, I worry. You know why? We just had a desaulter, all right? And the desaulter, it was overbuilt, overdesigned. Well, that happened again. Do we have exactly what we want? And then we heard the city only wanted to give eight million. Then we heard, I know the park, the needs said we need a gym. Then some people said, well, we're not going to pay for a gym. Then we're going to pay for senior center. You know, you guys in the Park District, I'd love to have you sit in a room, hash it out, and let's get this damn thing done. Excuse my language, but you know something? 15 years of desaulter, are we going to keep talking about a senior center? I'm sorry, but I have a right. I've lived in this community many years. I may not live here currently. And you know something? Nobody pays me to show up. That's the difference. I love this community. I care about the people. And for years, I talked to seniors. When they talked to me, they'd go, Matt, it's never going to happen. You know why? Because these two people can't get along, they can't make it, they can't move the ball. And tonight, I wonder if we're in the same situation we were years and years ago. I hope to God that people get together and get things done. You're politicians, you got to work with everybody. And sometimes it doesn't work the great way, and sometimes it does. But you know something? You have seniors. And it's not the Park District, it's not the city. They're the people who live in your district, and they're seniors. And they love their community, and they need a little love. And you know what the love they need? They need to go to a building, a brand-new building. They should tear that old thing down, and we should do it. If we can build a new library and a new school, don't you think we could do this for the people? Ask yourself that question tonight. When you go around town, and you, are we serving everybody? I hope to God you guys get it done. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, there are some members represented at the Park Board, and just want to give you an opportunity to acknowledge that you're here. I didn't know if you wanted to come up and say anything or not, you feel compelled to.
He'd turn in a card if he did.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kildee, council members, Marriott and Pleasant Valley Recreation Park District, General Manager. I want to just thank you for the opportunity. I know that we've been working on this project now for about a year and a half with the needs assessment, and I'm moving to phase two. So I can tell you from my standpoint, this is a fantastic opportunity for us to once again partner and then continue this as we're trying to build a senior and community center moving forward. So if you have any specific questions for me, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, once again, just thank you for the opportunity as we continue to move this project forward.
Any questions? Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, did you want to? Mr. Dixon? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm also a member of the Camry, the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District Board. And I too want to thank, thank the city council for their cooperative work with us on this project. I'm, I hear everything Mr. Lorimer had to say, and I know he's spoken for the senior center for many years, and he deserves some credit in keeping this in the public's eye. But I would disagree with him that, that we don't seem to be moving forward. We're making a lot of progress. I think the city and the, the Park District are working very cooperatively together. And I think we're moving at a, at a really good pace. And I appreciate everybody's involvement. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so with that, are there any other questions? Mr. Mulshee?
Just one question, particularly for the liaison members. In interviewing LPA, the architectural firm, I went on the website, looked at a lot of their work, very beautiful work. They could definitely build this kind of building. They mainly, a lot of their work seems to be a lot of glass and steel. I assume that we're fairly confident that they, they can not only meet our, our community standards in terms of design, but they can, they can, in fact, enhance them from an architectural standpoint and a design standpoint, aesthetic standpoint?
I was just showing you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I only went to their website.
No, I appreciate that question. And I want to, we spent, the liaison committee spent about four and a half hours in three comprehensive interviews of three, basically finalist firms, including this one. And I want to thank Dr. Dixon and Mr. Michler for their time.
And I want to thank Dr. Dixon and Mr. Michler for their time. I know Charlotte, you could not join us for that meeting, so I was kind of flying solo on behalf of the city, but Mr. Vaca and Mr. Norman were there as well. I think that the consultant, that the whole group, including the Recreation and Park District Directors who were there, we came to a consensus. We had a long, long conversation, but we felt that LPA was best suited to do this contract. I don't know how to say this. Not everything they build is completely steel and glass.
Right.
Right? They have other... They do... I didn't mean to be flip on that, but they have a good... They have a very good track record. There was another firm with a lot of experience in terms of senior centers specifically, but this firm also has, that has experience in senior centers, and from my standpoint, I thought that they were the best suited in order to get this project done. So that's my answer to you, and if I can just go off that and make a couple of the comments. I appreciate what Mr. Lorimer has to say. I really do support the senior center. I think we've made excellent progress in 18 months. In terms of the cooperation that now exists between the city and PV Recreation and Park District, I think it's greater than it has been in many, many years. I think we are on the right road. I would echo what Dr. Dixon has to say. The cooperation is there, and logically, I think we are approaching this project correctly. It takes more time, unfortunately. It takes time for government to work, but we've been through this needs assessment process. What we are going to now in this is the next logical step. It just takes a while to get it done, but we're getting there, and I think we're making all the right moves, and I'm pleased to support this agreement, and I'll make the motion when you're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Any other Mrs. Craven?
Yes, up until about 3:00 the afternoon before the interviews, I was still hoping to be able to go, but I came down with the flu, and nobody would have wanted me in that room, believe me. However, I had looked at all of the five packets that have been sent to me, and I too had... I have some of their pictures that are all glass and steel, and I say, I don't like this, but here's one that's good, here's one that's good. I've got little stickies on those, too. So they do do other things. They are a well-known sports company for designing architects for all kinds of sports activities, and they have... According to what I've read, they are good at putting different ages together, putting things together that can accommodate... Well, I can say it, I'm an old folk. Old folks like me and young people like the rest of you. And so they can all be in the same area. And I really thought, not having been part of the interview, but going in, I was leaning toward this company, so I was happy to hear when Tony told me that's the one they selected.
Okay. Any else? Anybody else?
Then, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Then I'd like to make a motion to adopt the staff suggested action that's set forth in the staff report.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to make one comment, and I really hope that... And I'm really proud of the work that the city Camrio and the Pleasant Valley Recreation Park District have done. And I think, I'm really hopeful that, and optimistic, that in retrospect and looking back after we've completed this process, this will be a very good example of how two different government agencies can come together to serve their common constituencies. So I'm really looking forward to some good things happening.
Couldn't agree more.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, that gets us down to item 9B. It's the 2019 legislative platform. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, this will be presented by Mr. Pichard.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and council members, and city staff. In 2014, the city council adopted a legislative platform to guide the council and staff in considering appropriate action on legislative proposals introduced at both the federal and state levels. Per City Council Policy 2.02, the city council must adopt a legislative platform annually. The policy committee met on February 21st to review and update the platform, which is attached to your report. Recommendations from the city staff were considered by the committee. City staff will monitor federal and state legislation and administrative or regulatory proposals, taking appropriate action when required in accordance with the adopted legislative platform in order to protect or advance the city's interests in Washington, D.C. and Having said that, upon the recommendation of the policy committee, staff suggests the council adopt the 2019 legislative platform. That concludes staff's report.
Is there any questions at this time? Do you have any questions on any of this? Let's see. Are there any changes that we need to identify here? Mr. Carr, is there any changes that we need to identify here?
So I can walk you through on the red lines? Just some cleanup on several of the pages, but ones that you can hone in on specifically are page two... I'm sorry, big number 19 on the red line.
All righty. Yeah.
We added a support legislation that provides cities with the greater share of fines and forfeitures. During the committee, policy committee meeting, council member or Vice Mayor Tremblay brought up, incidentally, just brought up that the Supreme Court ruled on a specific matter related to this, that states can no longer impose excessive fees and fines and forfeitures. And therefore, this potentially, this ruling could potentially have an impact on revenues specific to law enforcement. So that was one change. Moving on to page... That was an addition, I'm sorry. We added on page 21, number four, to support legislation that provides resources focused on supporting economic development. Part of the reason for that is, as we all are aware of, we are working on an economic development strategic plan, so that would perfectly align with that here. And we also added under litigation reform to oppose legislation that makes local governments liable for harassment claims brought against city contractors. I think that was discussed in our recent training, sexual harassment training these past few days. And under K, district-based voting systems, we took out the number one above and supplanted that with support legislation that seeks to amend the California Voting Rights Act to provide objective standards used to determine whether racially polarized voting exists. I think we all know the reason behind that. And then we went ahead and added a new topic, community services. Part of the reason we have discussed that previous item is a perfect example of why we added community services. And keep in mind that we also own a few public parks as well, so...
Just to make it clear for anybody listening, you're talking about facilities that the city owns and not about district-based voting. You said the thing we just talked about. I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure anybody listening related to the right thing.
The Recreation and Facilities Needs Assessment with the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District, as well as the facilities owned by the city.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that anybody out in television land knew that...
Thank you for that clarification. And then we added under drugs, number three, support legislation that provides local law enforcement agencies with technology training and funding to create a standard to detect cannabis DWI. So that's something that was actually... That's an item that was discussed amongst the Ventura Council of Governments Legislative Subcommittee, and I thought it was important to bring that into our platform, considering that, you know, cannabis is now, for the most part...
Legal.
Yeah, legal. So hopefully, we can get some legislation out there to assist us with identifying ways to combat those DWIs. And then, under Resources and Environment, Storm Drain and Sewer, the committee suggested that we add support legislation on page 25, big number 25, to support legislation which promotes efficiency and cost-effectiveness of publicly-owned treatment works. And I believe that's... I think we're... CASA is probably the driving force behind that.
Right.
And we're a member of CASA, so I think we want to align ourselves with CASA, and if they have any bills that they're going to be considering, that we, you know, we're set up to where our council or our representative can take a position, or the city manager can fire off a letter if need be.
And could we just let the public know that publicly-owned treatment works our sewage treatment plans?
Thank you. Yes. And then finally, on big page 27, under Military Alliance, we added to support legislation which allows for the early deployment of Air National Guard firefighting resources. And this is one that, you know, with the devastating fires that, you know, have been occurring throughout, up and down the state, council member Craven brought this up a few years back, that, you know, we should probably have some mechanism in place to allow for these Air National Guard firefighting resources to be deployed earlier rather than later. So... And then this item was also discussed amongst the VCOG members as well, and so I think you'll be seeing some of this type of legislation working its way through the legislature. And also...
And through the federal legislature.
And through federal legislature as well. But I also wanted to, you know, to kind of wrap it up and just say that, you know, with the help of staff and the input from the committee members, I think we have a pretty solid platform for 2019. And if any council members, any staff have any bills that they're aware of, that they want to bring forward, and feel that the city needs to take a position on, please bring it to our attention so that we can take appropriate action sooner rather than later. That concludes staff's report.
Okay, is there any questions of staff at this time? No. Any questions? Any committee report on this, or has it been...
I think I've already had it.
Early discussed here, so...
It was so thoroughly discussed.
Okay.
Can I make a motion?
Absolutely.
I'll move that we adopt the 2019 legislative platform.
I'll second.
It's a motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Please vote. With that, we've been going since 7:30. I've been asked to take a very brief nature break, so we're going to recess for just a few minutes here. 14, it's New Business Oral Communication Informational Items, and we'll start with the city manager tonight.
No reports.
No reports. Mr. City Attorney?
I have no items.
Okay. So today, tonight, we'll go with Mrs. Craven. Do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Oh, I've got a whole lot. I attended the VCTC meeting on the first, and I want to read you that the U.S. 101 HOV Widening Notice of Preparation has been out, Notice of Preparation of the Draft, EIR, for the widening of Highway 101. And there are going to be four public scoping meetings in late March and early April. And so if anybody asks, you now know.
Late March and April, did you say?
And early April, mhm. And I don't have anything more definite than that.
Okay.
I attended an RDP meeting, RDP 21, on the 5th, and you need to know that starting March 11th and going through the 25th, there is a large force exercise going on at Point Magoo, which means they're bringing in a whole lot of planes from other places, and it means that there will be more planes over Camrio. So if you receive calls, it's probably... And their large planes is probably from there. Wings over Camrio, the airshow, will be August 18th and 19th, and the theme this year will be D-Day. There was also, the main talk was from Mike McManus, who's the County of Ventura's Veterans Services Officer, and he talked about all of the services that the county... The county has 13 employees who work in this office, and they work with veterans to hook them up with all kinds of various services. I did attend the Camrio Ranch Foundation Board Meeting on the 5th also, and to make sure I said it right, I typed up what I'm going to say, so I'll be reading this. At that Camrio Ranch Foundation Meeting on the 5th, and I'm going to relate to you a message to all city council members, that was driven home pretty well by Board Member Karen King, who has taken on the role of fundraiser for the foundation. Earlier this year, Mrs. King, in her role as fundraiser, sent either one or two letters to each of us council members, asking each of us to donate $1,000 to the ranch. One later, letter asked for ongoing operations, I believe, and the other letter asked for donations for the children at the ranch. I'm not sure if she wanted $1,000 for each cause or just for one, but at Tuesday night's meeting, she... I'm just going to say that she expressed her displeasure because not a single one of us has responded with a check for $1,000. Not neither one of us, none of the five of us. It wasn't directed at... Sean and I took the brunt of the accusations, but it was for all of us. Wish I could find my agenda so I could tell you the rest of what I have to say. When will... Do we have any idea when Stock Lumber is going to show some signs of being raised?
Yes. Dave Klotzel could provide a little more information.
Yes, so the demolition contract is out to bid, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, bid openings are tomorrow for the demolition and the remediation of asbestos and lead-based paint. So we have a staff report drafted to bring back on March 27th for award of that contract, barring any unforeseen issues with the bids.
Okay, so maybe we'll see something in another couple of months?
So likely by the end of April. It takes a little bit of time to get the call, the contract, and securities, and all that documentation in place, but yes, in the next month or so, there should be action out there on the site.
Okay. I'm handing out another LA Times article. I'm going to give it to the city clerk, but it talks about Santa Monica and several other cities who are fighting to keep at-large voting and how much they're spending on it. I think it's timely, and I'll leave that for the city clerk. I know the city doesn't have anything to do with it, but you know, there are a lot of days I'm home with a 13-month-old baby. And during naptime, you really want that baby to be able to sleep so you can read packets or do something. And yesterday, the 13th, I guess it was the day... I don't know when the 13th was, either yesterday or the day before, I went back to my phone and tracked. There's some number in the valley that called me nine times between 12:18... in the valley that called me nine times between 12:18 PM and 3:40 PM. And I don't think anything can ever be done about these companies that just keep calling. They all were from one number, they all said it was Apple Incorporated. If I listened to one, it was telling me that all of my Apple devices would be deactivated as of midnight, which was fine with me, I don't own any Apple devices. But if they were going to be deactivated, it didn't bother me a bit. I'm really, I mean, I have to vent someplace, so I thought, other people come and tell us their problems, and I just tell you all my problems, too. Okay, back to business. I will be handing out to you a copy of the agenda for the California Contract Cities Association 60th Municipal Seminar, which will be held in May. And I think it's going to be very interesting, and if anybody else can attend, I think it will be a good conference. This is not a big thing like the league has, where you have to decide whether you're going to go to one of maybe 30 sessions, or 10 sessions going on at the same time. You go to one session, or you don't go to it, because there's only one session at a time. But I usually find them worthwhile. They always have a lunch where the LA County Sheriff speaks, and I go to that because it's lunch. But it's the one that usually doesn't pertain to us. But on the other hand, sometimes he talks about problems that have already spilled over, and they are problems of ours, and you can find out what they're doing about And that's all I have.
All right. So Ms. Tangiello, do you have anything tonight you'd like to share with us?
So I attended the League of Cities Planning Commissioners Academy, March 6 through 8. I was there with the entire planning commission, and Mr. Vaca, and Mr. Mo. And it was really useful for me. This is one of the things that I'm least familiar with, with the acronyms and the processes, so it was really helpful for me. And it was also really interesting to hear more in-depth about the legislative things that are happening, especially with development and housing. So I was very happy to be there, and it was nice to get to know the planning commissioners. I wanted to plug St. John's Pleasant Valley. Their cath lab performed their first heart catheterization procedure, and I decided to play nurse tonight. And I want to talk about why it is so important that we have a cath lab in Camarillo. Door-to-balloon time. What that actually means is the amount of time that you walk in the door of an emergency room to the balloon is inflated in your artery that's blocked. And that balloon blows up to open up that artery again, so that it restores blood flow to your heart. And I actually used to, and I helped with a lot of the research the American Heart Association does, collecting all of this information on these heart attacks, and what was the best way to treat them, and what the benchmarks were. And the benchmark is that from that time period, from the time you go through that door in the emergency room to that balloon is inflated in your coronary artery in the cath lab, should be no more than 90 minutes. And if it's less than 90 minutes, then your survival rate is much better, your quality of life is much better. So you can imagine that if you have a heart attack, and you go to Pleasant Valley Hospital, and there's no cath lab, how much time it takes to get an ambulance, load you up, pack you up, get everything ready to do that, and get you to either La Siroblis, or St. John's, or a hospital with a cath lab. So it's a really big deal for our community to have a cath lab here, because we can hit that 90-minute benchmark, door-to-balloon. You've all learned something tonight. So the last thing that I want to talk about is the difficult one. I do want to address the speakers that were here tonight. And I have received multiple emails, multiple phone calls, multiple Facebook messages, and in-person requests concerning writing a letter to the fairgrounds. We also, as a council or city, received a letter from Mike Powers, CEO of Ventura County, requesting us to also write a letter to the fairgrounds. I did not ask for people to come here tonight. Actually, the reverse is true. I was elected to represent people who live here, and so the people who elected me, or even the people who didn't vote for me, I don't know, asked me to bring this up, and asked me to try to get it on the agenda. I don't know if I really want to get into the nuts and bolts of it. I don't think that's really the point of trying to get it on the agenda. The point is for us to be able to have that discussion. And that's why I would like for it to be on an upcoming agenda. I know there was a question about whether it's our jurisdiction. I think Libby Higgins brought up a really good point, that I actually hadn't even thought about that fact that we don't elect, nobody elects the board for the fairgrounds, and that it is state property. And I think we should have a say in what's happening with that state property, and I'm not sure how else we do that, except to act as a city. And I do want to say that we are touched by gun violence here. We already mentioned the borderline shooting. But also in 2016, there were three women that were shot to death by their husband in our town. One of them was a friend of mine. Not that that makes her life any more valuable, or the others less, but it does touch us. I do not think that not having gun shows is a magic bullet. I don't believe in getting rid of the Second Amendment, or taking away guns from people. I'm not extreme in that sense. I do believe that doing nothing is not an answer. I do believe that we have to chip away at the gun violence culture. And I do believe this is one way to do that. So I am hoping that one of my colleagues will agree with me, and support putting this on an upcoming agenda, so that we can have discussion among us, and get more input from the public. Thank you.
Do you want to go down with the other council committees, or should we address this right now? We can do it either way. If we do, I think what we can do is maybe ask maybe the city manager to explain.
Currently, we have a request by a council member to put an item on the agenda. Per Council Policy 1.04, scheduling city council meeting agenda items, to move this onto the agenda, I need to hear at least one other council member agree to put it on the agenda, and then we can have more discussion. There's another decision point to be made after that. So I need to hear another council member assent to this idea, and then we can continue the conversation. Otherwise, it dies here.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything else to add to that? Is that pretty much what it is? Okay. So I'll open that up. All right, well, we didn't get a second on that, so move on without the lack of a second.
Can I add one thing? I thought about what would happen if this happened, so I do want people at home who's watching, and you sitting out here, to know that I will be writing a letter on my own, as an elected official, not representing the city or the council, but as an elected official. And I urge anybody else who feels the same way to do the same thing, to reach out, to ask other people to reach out, and to speak your voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mulchey, anything to share tonight?
I do. Monday, March 4th, I attended the Camarillo Ranch Foundation Business Development Task Force. It's kind of a subcommittee. We are tasked with analyzing the business side of the Camarillo Ranch Foundation, particularly the venue, the venue rental. So we're right now doing analysis, a lot of in-depth analysis, going over a lot of numbers, looking at the lay of the land, so to speak, when it comes to venue rental throughout Ventura County and the broader Southern California region, trying to figure out where we stand. One thing that we did do was we identified key performance indicators, also known as KPIs, just a very quick way of, it's an efficient way, a very effective way to really simply say, these are the things that we're going to track from a quantitative standpoint, and use that to determine whether or not the CRF, particularly the business side, but the CRF as a whole, is effective. You know, primarily from a financial standpoint and a business standpoint. And I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to that. Tuesday, the very next night, March 5th, I attended the Camarillo Ranch Foundation Board Meeting. I echo everything Charlotte said. What she said is my exact recollection of events. There were several questions in regards to the Acorn article that had come out, in which I was heavily quoted on, or quoted in. I was asked if I was misquoted, or misrepresented in any way. I indicated that I had not been. Everything that I was quoted on saying there is truthful, factual, and I did a lot of analysis on the books to come to some of those conclusions. The, I'll just touch on this topic a little bit, but the Camarillo Ranch Foundation does have certain, there are certain financial concerns in regards to their sustainability financially. It is something that we, right now, the CRF level, within that organization, they are looking at that rather seriously and significantly, because otherwise, it does undermine the ability for them to fulfill their mission, which is the preservation and the education, and the celebration of that property, and everything that it holds, and the Adolfo-Camarillo history. So that is my primary concern. That was something I echoed repeatedly in my interview, and it was something that was put there, the very last sentence, is that my underlying concern in regards to the financial sustainability of the CRF is finding a solution, finding a way to where we can ensure that they will be financially sustainable moving forward, so as to protect that mission, because I think that is a vitally important mission. And it, right now, the financial troubles and woes that they're going through undermines that, and distracts from it significantly. So we need to, I'm sure at some point, it may come up to this council. That's to be seen. But there's definitely a lot of discussion happening, particularly on the CRF side, in committees and subcommittees and whatnot amongst the board, in trying to identify, we've more or less identified the issues. It's really now trying to figure out what needs to change, and how we go about, do we, does everything stay intact, or do we need to reform in some aspect, the CRF, and how they function, in order to provide that financial sustainability? So that's a question that is yet to be answered. I don't necessarily have the answer to that question yet, and that's, right now, it's kind of at the feet of the board.
Sean, do we have any timeline about, I know they've got subcommittees and whatnot that they've appointed, but do they look to come back with some recommendations? I know I say that because I know they're getting into their busy season, if you will, too.
Yeah. The, it's my understanding that we haven't set a hard and fasted deadline on this. We have casually discussed that it should be wrapped up, not wrapped up, but we should be, whatever changes we make, need likely happen by before the end of this fiscal year, which is in June, their fiscal year, I'm sorry, their fiscal year, the CRF's fiscal year, in June, this summer. So that way, they could start the next financial year on whatever new course they've determined is appropriate, in order to maintain financial security and sustainability moving forward. So, like I said, I don't know exactly what that is going to entail, what that'll look like, but they have numerous different committees amongst, both the board, the business task force, they have a subcommittee, another task force that's looking at the operating agreement between the CRF and the city. I'm not privy as to what's going on in that meeting, I don't recall. They didn't actually, I don't know if they even gave an update at the last meeting, so I'm not sure. But any other questions? I'm happy to entertain any questions on that topic, before I move on to some other items that I attended. If anyone has any questions.
Let me just ask one question. I want to get into, Mr. Tremble, he always says the weed's too much, but their reserves have impacted, but it's not that they're not, there's still revenue coming into the board, in other words.
There's revenue coming into the board, the primary concern is that--
I think I need to interrupt at this point. This is now becoming a dialogue, and we should probably--
We'll get that in.
Yeah, if you want to have a further conversation, it should be put as an agenda item, is my recommendation.
Yeah, we'll get that--
Okay, fair enough. On Wednesday, March 6th, I attended a Utility Committee Meeting with Vice Mayor Tremble. We made some revisions to the city's solid waste ordinance. The city council should expect that coming to us for a vote in the near future. Thursday, March 7th, I attended the Association of Water Agencies of Ventura County. There, I was elected as an alternate for that association. I'm going to be Al Fox's alternate, he's the Director of the Camarosa Water District. One interesting discussion that was had there, and it kind of caught me, I was really interested to hear about this, and I haven't seen it widely reported, but everyone in that room just seemed to be clued in to the recent wildfires. And they talked about the recent wildfires, and the fact that we had a lot of different fire companies, agencies, coming in and assisting fighting that fire. And one of, a lot of, one or two primary concerns in regards to a lot of those assisting agencies, was that they either, one, didn't have the proper hookups in many cases, they had different hookups to our hydrants, or did not have the proper hookups to our hydrants, because their hydrants in their respective towns, or cities, or counties were--
States.
Or states, yeah, in states, were different, and they weren't aware of that, and so that sometimes delayed them. The big one was, many times, they didn't know what they were hooking up to in regards to the flow rate of the water. Because, you know, every city, depending on what you're hooking up to, and the pipe that's feeding that fire hydrant, they're all different-sized pipes, and depending how old they are, some are smaller than others, and they have different flow rates, and I guess they had significant pressure issues. I say that because they, the Association of Water Agencies was discussing, potentially spearheading, an initiative to create a standard in Ventura County, to whereas we could identify on the outside of every fire hydrant in our county, what that, what its respective flow rate is. Through maybe a color, we threw out a bunch of different ideas, whether it's color-coded something, or some sort of symbol on each respective fire hydrant that would indicate to any other agency who's outside the area and is not familiar with the infrastructure, what the flow rate of that hydrant is. I don't know enough about this topic to really get into it much more than that, but I just thought that was really interesting, and a discussion that was had. Right now, in the state of California, there is no, there is no means by which to identify when it comes to different jurisdictions. You know, a firefighting company from either the state, or from north comes down here, they don't necessarily, I guess they don't necessarily have the capability on the fly to identify what the proper hookup is, or what the flow rate of that respective fire hydrant is. In many cases, because they don't understand the local infrastructure, it weakens their ability to become, be effective in assisting, in our case, our jurisdiction, or Ventura County, in fighting fires. So I thought that was really interesting. On Monday, March 11th, this goes back to the Camarillo Ranch Foundation, at that board meeting, I was actually invited to attend the Sub Finance Committee, and so I took them up on that offer as a member of the public. And I attended that meeting, and I was able to dig down and have a more in-the-weeds discussion about finances with them. And that was really fruitful. I felt like I got a lot out of that discussion. That's all in events. I have just one item I want to bring up, and this is something that's really important to me. And that's Sunday, March 17th, and St. Patrick's Day. And that's Sunday, March 17th, and St. Patrick's Day. With St. Patty's Day comes, obviously, a lot of drinking. Having worked at what probably many would term as one of the major watering holes in Camarillo, Brendan's Irish Pub, we served a lot of alcohol. St. Patty's Day was, as always, our flagship day. But with that came a lot of responsibility. I've lost too many friends to drinking and driving and I just want to encourage everyone to please be responsible, be safe. Don't drink and drive. You know, take Uber, take Lyft and, you know, let's not contribute to this, anymore to this 41% DUI arrest rate that we're seeing. We don't need any more people to get hurt. We don't need any more families to lose loved ones and, you know, please just have fun, but make responsible, safe decisions in how you celebrate that day.
The arrested ones are lucky. They get a ride to someplace.
You're right.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Trembley, anything tonight?
Yeah, I echo your comments, Sean, on that. Meetings attended, March 6th, the Utilities Committee with Sean. We have been really carving up the solid waste ordinance and I want to compliment staff. We've been doing an awful lot of work on it. We'll see that coming back before us soon. I had a meeting of the Executive Committee for the Economic Development Collaborative on that same day. On March 7th, I attended the Sheriff's Breakfast and Law Enforcement Update and Mrs. Craven was there, Charlotte was there as well, and actually got kind of a preview, but the crime stats were countywide. And so, tonight, we saw the crime stats for Camarillo. But the stats are going in the right direction as far as I'm concerned. That same day, I had a Clean Power Alliance Board Meeting in Los Angeles. I try to go to those personally because I just, it helps me rather than try to participate remotely. And I'm going to talk about CPA in just a minute. March 12th yesterday, I had a required workplace harassment training session here that went about two and a half hours together with other city staff. Today, I went to a Clean Power Alliance presentation to a seniors group at United Methodist Church. And what was presented by a Clean Power Alliance staff member was an overview of Clean Power Alliance and the questions that were asked were terrific. And we actually had, we had a number of folks who live within the unincorporated area, for example, the estates are up in the heights, but the balance were folks who live within the city. And of course, the reason I mention that is because we have two different default tiers for incorporated versus unincorporated. But they asked terrific questions and I also went to a, we had a planning session today, so I'm going to segue into this next topic. On Tuesday, March 26th, at 7:00, here in the council chambers, will be a presentation by Clean Power Alliance. I know I'll be attending that.
What time is it again, Tony?
March 26th at 7:00 P.M. We've done a save, in case anybody's listening, we've done a save the date out on Facebook. I know it's going to be publicized in our different electronic media platforms and flyers, et cetera. But that presentation will be, will consist of, among other things, an overview of Clean Power Alliance, the billing tiers, the programs. And in addition, there will be a specific component for those folks who are NEM, Net Energy Metering Solar, customers. And it's really important because those folks actually have now until March 31 to decide whether or not to opt out of Clean Power or to stay within Clean Power unless they've already opted out. But that March 31 date is key, so this forum is happening four or five days prior to that. It will be broadcast live, live from City Hall, live from these chambers. Oh, careful what I say. Anyway, live. It will be taped, as I understand it, for rebroadcast on the Public Service Channel. It will also be streamed, if I'm understanding it correctly, Mr. Norton, will that be streamed?
It'll be on YouTube and the video will be on our website.
Okay, all right. And for all those reasons, I would really, I've urged a number of folks who I know who have solar facilities at their home to attend this because there's been an awful lot of questions regarding some of the aspects of the solar program, you know, just tip of the iceberg, you know, will folks be paying monthly if they are a net energy user versus net generator? What's going on with the annual true-up? What's going on with the credits, et cetera? So, all of this information will be there and available that night. And then finally, I want to echo what Susan had to say, not just because I have a cardiac pacemaker, but St. John's Pleasant Valley Hospital having a working cath lab is a big deal. And I think the prior council did the right thing in having the city contribute funds for the operation of that cath lab. The bottom line is it's going to save Camarillo lives and it's going to save lives from folks outside Camarillo, too. But it is an excellent facility, an excellent situation for us to have here in Camarillo. And I agree completely with Susan. It is a big deal, so I'm really happy to see that. And that's it for me.
So, let's see, meetings that I attended, several of us went on a business visitation. Hang on here, I want to make sure that, yeah, it was that, was that the Animal Makers?
Yes.
Remember that? Yes, that was really, this guy's amazing. You never know what's behind, I've always said that, you know, we drive around the city and you see these walls of these businesses, you wonder what's going on in there. Well, this gentleman has got a business where he makes animals for the movie industry.
Animated animals.
Animated animals that they can move their head. Boy, they look real, don't they? He was showing us this one parrot that the guy could put on his shoulder that could, you know, move his head and it looked totally real. His biggest, let's see, his biggest client is, I think it's MGM in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Bellagio.
Bellagio in Las Vegas, Nevada, where you go in there and you see all these animals there and...
The conservatory.
The conservatory. And a lot of them are made right here in Camarillo, California, believe it or not. Now, he loves it here. I think he started off in Moore Park, I think he was in Moore Park, and then he moved to Camarillo because he liked Camarillo better. Nothing against, Moore Park's great, don't get me wrong, but he liked Camarillo because he felt he was a little bit more out in nature or however you want to put it here. It's a little bit more, a little more rural than what he, where he was. And it is fascinating, all the posters for the movies that he had up there that he has supplied.
More than a hundred.
More than a hundred, supplied these animals in and some very, very famous movies there. And he's an interesting, he's a super interesting guy, high-energy. And I asked him, well, how do you get, you know, these animals to Las Vegas? And he just gets a truck and he breaks it down and he has his drivers, you know, drive these trucks and he's with them, of course. And then he goes into the Bellagio and they assemble them right there in the Bellagio.
But they can't start assembling until the last person has left the conservatory. They're hoping, they always hope to get them out by 2:00 in the morning because they only have until morning to get the new ones set up. And he said sometimes it's as little as four hours.
Yeah. And it's just, it's fascinating. If anybody has a chance to go over there, it's really, really fascinating to see what they do. And I think, Charlotte, they had, what did he say, 15 employees? They were actually there building one of the animals there while we were taking the tour.
Sixteen-foot crane, like a bird crane.
All animated.
He likes Camarillo because he said that the employees he's gotten since he started in Camarillo have really been into what they're doing. They learned it very quickly and they love it. And I gathered that in the past, he hadn't been able to keep a steady employee because the employees, you know, as different jobs go, you do different things.
Yeah, I was talking to one of the employees and he had graduated from an art school and had paint all over him and he was, you know, little web feet and he was painting this little web feet, you know? And it was really fascinating what he's doing right in Camarillo, California, which is really exciting. That was fun. Anyhow, and then I had an 8:30, Thursday, I had an 8:30 VRSD meeting that I attended. I also attended the harassment training as well. And this coming week, I got a lot going on, too, but we'll get to that later. I did want to make a comment. I have never been to a gun show in my life and I fully intend to go to one because I want to educate myself on what they are and what they're about. So, all right. So, we do have, what else do we, we've got, we do have two study sessions, I think, that we have to get, get to? We do have two more study sessions. So, with that, we will recess into a study session.